Well, thank you all for coming. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation tonight will be Pastor Journey from the Seventh Day Adventist, and we will follow that with our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Journey?
Father God, Creator of the universe, I want to thank you that you have allowed us to be stewards of this fine city. And I pray tonight for the first responders. I pray for the mayor and the City Council. I pray that the decisions that are made here tonight will be for the best of the city and will be the best for all of those concerned. And I want to thank you for watching over us and protecting us and for your son, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
(Applause). allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public announcements? Thank you. We do have some Boy Scouts here. I understand you're here working on a merit badge. Do we have any 4th graders who are working on their Nevada citizenship? If you'd like to come up, we'll sign your agenda for you. If you don't have one, I think we have an extra up here. How are you tonight? What's your name? Hannah? Are you working on this? Good. Pass it this way. Thank you. And what's your name? Christine?
Hey, how's it going? Looking for a great...
We'll start it this way, and then you can get him.
Where's your teacher? Miss Lang? Yeah? We'll go down here.
And if all the 4th graders who did just get those signatures, if you would please stand, we'll make sure that you get on camera so you can tell your teacher you are here.[216.12][216.12](Laughter/Applause). All right, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda. The public comment period will be based on the stated rules and consists of five minutes per person. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Ms. Barnett?
Linda Barnett. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number 12 regarding a renewal of the land lease agreement between the city and Sea Spot Run Dog Park. I and so many of us Boulder City residents support the efforts of all involved with this park. I have had the pleasure of watching in action the president of Sea Spot Run, Sandra Frazier. As the website says, "If you're not familiar with Sandra, go to the park. She practically lives there."[283.12][283.12](Laughter). That's her group back there. I'd add, if she's not there, you'll find her in front of the credit union selling tickets for one of her fundraisers. She's a Boulder City dynamo, and I wanted to use this opportunity to give her a well-deserved shout-out from so many of us for all the things she does throughout the year to make sure the park goes forward and thrives. She's got her fantastic Bow Wow Bingo fundraiser. She's a principal of the Pooch Parade fundraiser. She creates, created a special Boulder City residents' dog calendar to help raise funds and many, many other things. She goes non-stop and puts 100% of her energy and heart into making sure Sea Spot Run runs well and thrives. I'm sure the council will support Sandra's efforts tonight, and thanks to Sandra from so many of us.[342.72][342.72](Applause).
Roseanne? Good evening. Roseanne Rabiot Omeley, and I want to say something about Agenda Item 8. This has really been a long time coming. More than a decade ago when we got new equipment for BCTV, and I was PIO, first thing I asked for was, wow, let's show all those city meetings. Nah, nah, can't do that, can't do that. My job, I, you know, I'm a salaried person. I'm glad to do it. So then my job got cut in half, and I was not happy. But the good part about that was that Bryce brings Holly into BCTV, and Holly didn't know anything about TV, but she wanted a job. And she expressed to me things that I thought were important about learning and about keeping a job. She's been there nine years. Nine years! I liked the comparisons, the cost comparisons that were put together, whether we do it part-time contractor, good comparisons. And it really doesn't have anything to do with my liking Holly. She can do the job. She's flexible enough. You're not going to get that with a whole lot of other people. It's not going to work that way. Okay? It doesn't, doesn't work that way. So I hope that you will all approve this position change for her. And it's nice to know that sometimes old ideas come to the forefront, you know, and crazy little old ladies like me aren't just, you know, talking out of their ears, and that sometimes you're validated. And good ideas don't go away. They just take a long time to happen. So I hope you make this happen. Thank you.[531.82][531.82](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
Thank you for giving this opportunity. I'm speaking on behalf of Bill 1858 of the racetrack. I read that bill. I've read the lease.
Sir, let me just interrupt you. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Charles Bullen, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
When you get five minutes, you try to be as quick as possible. I'm sorry about that. After looking at that lease and reviewing it, I put some calculations to numbers. The guy that has the lease is still, can charge us rent, which I don't agree with because I'm a Boulder City resident. It's going to cost about $150 per person before I can even open the door. It's roughly about $1,750 with the insurance, the ambulance, which we did at our last two races, we provided ambulance, and we will always provide ambulance. And we never did before because we didn't have to, but according to our contract and the agreement with others. I've just found out today on some social media that we're not even welcome anymore, so I was so excited to come here tonight, and there got a new person that wants to take over this quarter midget stuff, and we were doing so much for the town of Boulder City. I'm sort of disappointed. So I would say we need to abolish that bill, and we need to renew that lease and look at that lease so that we can all afford to race out there. Why are the kids getting charged? I have a family that can't pay that. Our sanctioning fees is $45. They have two cars. To write a check for $80, you could tell that it hurt them bad. But they came every weekend and raced with us. If I'm going to add this, more expenditures than I'm voting to, if I was a voter, I would vote to abolish this, and let's start all over and get our heads together. Why should I have to pay to rent a piece of land when I'm a Boulder City resident? And basically, that's all I've got about that. And I'm really sad today when I, when I read some social media that bashed us, put us down. They got a new person taking over. We're not no longer invited. And of course, we're a USAC sanctioning organization. There are quarter, and there's a GMA sanctioning organization that's already been lined up to take over, and I'm very, very upset with that hearing today. I don't know where that came from. Well, I know where it came from. It came off of Facebook, one of the most difficult, and I would recommend nobody even have an account to it. But social media is a, is a terrible thing when you find, when you get slapped in the face. And I got slapped in the face today, and I'm not very happy. But I would really like for y'all to think about that. We need to get our heads together and make this right. Make it right for the kids. And I've got a little young kid that wants to say something, but are you wanting to come up?
Yeah.
Is it all right if she comes up? You can give her...
Please, have her come forward.
I really want the track open. I really want the track open because it's super fun to race, and my family likes coming there to watch me race. And I have two cars, so I really like to race. Thank you.[804.12][804.12](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Jill?
Good evening. Jill Bunch, Boulder City resident, owner of Chili Jilly's Bakery and Cafe. I'm here to support item 12 on the docket about the dog park. I'd like to reiterate basically and support everything that Linda said about everything that Sandra does for the dog park. I myself personally use the dog park every day because my dogs love it there, and I've never seen anybody work so hard and diligently daily at something that sometimes I feel like is very unrewarding for Sandra. I've seen her there early in the day and late at the night trying to fix the water and really trying to make it a great place for the city and the community to bring their dogs, and we greatly support this issue. I also was here for Sandra, but I also support what Charles said because personally, as the owner of Chili Jilly's, we actually were fundraising for one of the families that wanted to ride at the track, and the fundraiser got canceled and the, the race never happened because of whatever happened. I'm not really sure about all the logistics there, but I do think that the track should be available for the Boulder City residents, and we can fundraise for the people that don't have the monies to race. So that's all. Thank you.[904.23][904.23](Applause).
In the back, please.
Hi, I'm Ed Grant, also here for item Agenda 12, Sea Spot Run. I've walked dogs in many a place in my life, and this is the best dog park I've ever used. The ability to be able to not have everybody just in one spot and the way it's built so that you can walk around, you feel like you're out in the desert. And if you're getting old and your knee hurts, you don't have to have your dog on the leash to pull you over. And I, again, I'm just floored at the money it takes to run it every month and how hard Sandra and the rest of her volunteers work to keep it going.[955.69][955.69](Applause).
Here in the front?
My name is Jackson Betner. I'm here for the track of Boulder City. It's really fun to race there. I have so many good memories there, and it'd be really nice to go back to that track. And my parents have put so much effort into fixing my cars, and I just like think it'd be nice to go back to that track. So yeah, that's all I have. Bye-bye.[990.13][990.13](Applause).
In the back?
I jumped in.
That's okay.
My name is Hunter Betner. I'm Jackson's dad. And man, there's so many things for kids to do here in this town. When I was a kid, there wasn't as many things, and since it's grown with the parks and the BMX track and all the other stuff. Saying that, last year, we came out and realized that this track was going down there, and we didn't really think anything of it. We went and washed and got hooked and got into it and raced the majority of the season last year. And when it shut down earlier this year, we were pretty head over heels into it. And so now we have to travel to either Phoenix, it's one of the closest tracks, or San Bernardino, three and a half, four-hour drive, which is worth it because it's a blast. But it was nice to have a track here in Boulder City for the kids to race at, and they still do, they do a race every year in November, I believe it is, the Orleans, a big national race where people come from all over. So to have a, a track here that ran year-round would be awesome also to get, you know, just more people around doing it. And it's a pretty big stretch from Phoenix to San Bernardino between tracks, so it's a good spot right in the middle, and it's really suited for it, and that's really all I have. Thank you.[1068.71][1068.71](Applause).
Mr. Hance?
My name's Charlie Hance, and for the record, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, and I want to talk to item, item 15, the appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. Currently, Blair Davenport is a member of the committee, and her term expires, I think, August 31st, and she has expressed a desire for, to be reappointed, and I suspect it is probably a no-brainer to reappoint her because she's a valued member of the committee. But I do want to make one point about the necessity of reappointing her, and that is that the city is now a, and I do this backwards every time, classified as a certified local government, CLG. I always say GCGL, but anyway, one of the requirements of that is that the HPC, the Historic Preservation Committee, must have one member that meets the Secretary of Interior's professional qualification standards. And currently, the only person on the committee that meets that standard is Blair. And if Blair were to not be reappointed, and I'll read this, this is quote from the Nevada CLG manual, "If a local government cannot find a volunteer who meets those requirements, they must demonstrate to the shippo that they attempted to fill that position with someone who met the SOI PQS," and how long they left the announcement before moving on to non-SOI-qualified applicants or candidates. Now, you guys probably know what the SOI PQSs are, but anyway, the bottom line is if we don't reappoint Blair, there's a, there's a certain amount of rigmarole that is going to have to be gone through to maintain our status as certified local government. So I strongly recommend that, that we reappoint her. Thank you.[1224.51][1224.51](Applause).
Sir?
Good evening. My name is Duncan Starke, resident here in Boulder City and have been for many years. And I also want to talk about, first of all, I'm not one of Sandra's admiration people, you know, she, they're going to nominate her for sainthood by the time she's done tonight. But anyway, I, first of all, I really think this is a great idea, this Sea Spot Run. I never used it. I have no intention of probably ever using it either, but I look what it means to the city and what it brings to the city, and I think it's very important that we have facilities like this within our city, not just for the city itself. I wish some people would take as good care of their yards as these guys take care of that Sea Spot Run area, you know? But anyway, I just hope that you keep it and you keep it, allow people to use it because I think it's an asset to the city in more ways than just, if I was in real estate, I think I'd use that as one of the selling points. And so I really hope you do vote for it, and I think we need to keep that in mind, what it means to the city, not just a few individuals. Thank you.[1303.08][1303.08](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak? Sandra?[1312.14][1312.14](Laughter).
Come on, Duncan. Hello, I am Sandra Frazier. I am president of Sea Spot Run.[1326.64][1326.64](Applause). Stop. And I really hope that you take consideration in us running in the park again. We do have a lot of plans for the park. We have now just developed three phases of the park and the priorities in which it is. We just spent $17,000 in new water system for the 160 trees in which were donated by the Park Service, Forest Service. So we do work quite hard to keep that alive. The Forest Service predicted that if the trees survive in the large area, we'll have 75% shade. So we don't really want to put any grass in that area because the land does all this. So where we would like to put grass is in the small dog park. It took me five years to get someone to commit to a bid. My first bid was $42,000, and my second bid was $46,000. So we do have a grass fund, and we are trying very diligently to raise the money. We do now have a developer who's drawing plans up for our vent area. If grass is what everybody wants, we'll try to put grass. We did have some other thoughts because of the water shortage and things like that, maintenance, because that's another issue we have is maintaining it, mowing it, watering it, feeding it, all the things that other parks are, you know, that do for it. So any help is wonderful that you can do, but we really would like to continue doing the maintenance in the, of the park. Thank you.[1426.87][1426.87](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
My name is Paul Kramer. I live in Boulder City. I'd like to just make a couple of small questions about item number 16. Does the city of Boulder, I'm relatively new here, so I don't know all of this. Does the city of Boulder City have any kind of ordinance against vagrancy?
Sir, just to make you aware in public comment, we're not required to respond to this. I believe city staff would be happy to speak with you afterwards about existing codes.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane, I would just like to encourage you, if possible, to, when the various items, especially being that there are items that are really, people want to know about, to please explain as much as possible what's involved in those and maybe ask for comment if people have any prior to actually voting on them, please. Thank you.[1522.69][1522.69](Applause).
Anyone else? Someone over on this side? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Lori Cricket, and I'm a resident of Henderson, Nevada, and I'm just here to make a few comments about item number 12, the Sea Spot Run Dog Park. I've been coming to the park for seven years, and it is such a beautiful park. It's so well-maintained. It really adds to, or it's just an exemplary park, and it, it really stands out compared to all the other parks. And I come to Boulder City twice a day to bring my dog, and I just, I can't say enough for all the hard work that Sandra has done, and I just want to thank the city of Boulder City for such a beautiful park. And thank you for allowing us to have access to the land and use it. Thank you very much.[1590.29][1590.29](Applause).
Anyone else? Mr. Phan?
My name is Glenn Phan. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. I'm going to keep this real short. Yes, I have a dog park, keep that. I'll never use it, don't have a dog, but I think it's a great asset to the city. The racetrack and stuff like that, again, another great asset to the city. Hopefully it'll work out something to keep them down. It's a fun activity for the kids and stuff like that. This could be a little draw if we get some more dota riding while Saturday afternoon races, people from town go down and watch it and such. You know, so I mean, kind of keep going with that if you can. Do whatever you can do to help them to keep that. There's a good, couple of good things for our city. And also, another good thing for our city is keeping Blair Davenport on the, on the Historic Preservation Committee. I get to go, I go to several of the, those meetings and stuff like that, and it's always good to hear her. She's got her head on her shoulder. She knows what she's talking about. She's up on things. She's a tremendous asset to that committee, so hopefully you'll keep her on. Thank you.[1666.01][1666.01](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Last chance. All right, with that, we will close public comment then. And before we move on to approval of agendas, is Councilman Harhay on the line? Councilman?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you. With that then, we'll move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Bring back to council for any changes.
There are a couple of changes that I, that are before us that I had mentioned earlier that are on this.
Do you want to move any items or...
They were just clerical.
On the consent.
On the consent.
On the changes.
Yeah, okay.
All right then, entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved. Moved to accept.
We have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes, mayor, but I'd just like to point out in the draft minutes, there was a small change on page seven, item number 10, to include the council member who made the motion. And on item four, the resolution was corrected to reflect that the grant amount was for hometown Christmas events. The header was right in the body. It mentioned something else, so that has been corrected, and it's, it's before you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
All right, bring back to council. Any changes for the consent agenda? Councilman Adams?
I would... The green light's on. I will try to speak very loud. I would like to see item number five put on the radio.
And that could come, there we are. That could come after the item number seven, obviously.
Any other changes?
Mayor, I have one. I'd like to move number four off the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay, so that's items four and five moved to the regular agenda. Any other changes? Entertain a motion then for approval with changes.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will then move on to item four then, approval of a $5,000 grant.
Oh, yeah, that little league.
So you don't want him to wait out there?
It's school night.
Okay, we do have a very special group waiting out in the hallway tonight. You know, a lot of people say, "Little old Boulder City, you know, we don't do much here." But we have a group of Little League All-Stars out there that won the state championship here in Nevada. And they also advanced to the regional playoffs here in the West Coast. So again, we want to recognize all the work they've done. We've got some proclamations here for them. And what I'm going to do is, Coach Spencer, you're going to hand them out because I don't know these gentlemen by name, so I would appreciate if you do that. Thank you. All right, first up is Jack Clary. And Caleb Brown. Jeremy Spencer. Charlie Stewart. And Dylan Spencer. Not with us here tonight is Cameron Calvez, Colton Hartgroves, and Brayden Cook. I want to thank all those players that couldn't make it tonight and all the players that could be here. And I want to thank the community, the outpouring show of support financially, emotionally, at the end of stands. It was, it was a great run for these boys right here. They've had a good year, last two years, winning districts two years in a row. And then we come back this year winning again and then taking the state champions, championship. It was a great honor for me to be a coach. Last of all, I don't want to forget Coach Jesse Aldridge over there and Coach Mindy Calvez, who's not with us tonight. Thank you. Yep. Squeezing. Again, I just want to say outstanding job, you know, we're all community here. This is a group of all-stars. They worked hard all season for this. This is the second year in a row now. So again, well done, gentlemen. Thank you. we have the state champion all-star team two years in a row. One of these days, we're going to have to talk about actually recognizing all the great athletes and athletic teams and efforts, both the girls' and boys' teams that our schools produce here in town. I know the schools do some of that, but I think we ought to be awfully proud of it as a community as well. So great job to them. Now we'll move to item four. This item is for grant or a request for payment for the expenses related to the hometown Christmas events. Our community development director, Michael Mays.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. The Boulder City Chamber of Commerce is seeking reimbursement of 50% of the planned advertising expenses for the annual hometown Christmas events. This is estimated to be approximately $1,075. In addition, as in past several years, the chamber is seeking city support of $3,500, which pays for the Christmas parade-related expenses, which includes rental of tables, chairs, stages, sounds, and radios for the parade. With fiscal year 20 budget, this item was transferred to the 10-730 Community Grants Fund within the city's budget. Jill Legan, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, is here to answer any questions. And in the interest of full disclosure, the city is a member of the Chamber of Commerce and recently the chamber board had asked for myself to join the chamber board representing the city. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Someone had asked for this to be taken.
So the reason that I wanted this off the consent agenda is because of, to clarify, that as part of the special event promotion grant, that there are certain conditions that the monies must meet. And most of those are under advertising-type expenses. And so I just wanted it to, to really separate out the, what was considered advertisement expense versus other expenses that are being requested. So I don't know if there's a discussion. I didn't really have any questions, but...
Would Ms. Legan care to offer any additional information?
Jill Legan, Boulder City Chamber, thank you. I actually prepared some information. So I'm excited to be here to talk tonight about some of the great events that we have here in Boulder City. Events have proven to be a large contributor to the economic health of our community. We now have the data that shows that room occupancy rises from 10% to 40% when events happen in our town. Sales reported by businesses increase around events. We know the significant importance of them economically, but they are also strong contributors to the overall quality of life for those of us that live here, as well as for those guests that we welcome during the events all year round. Michael had shared with me that there were some questions regarding the specific request and we understand those questions and appreciate the opportunity to discuss them. I see the request really as two separate applications. The first is the real marketing grant request with the 50/50 match that Michael just discussed for specific forms of advertising that totals a request of $10,075. This will be utilized to pay for the forms of advertising listed to the ads, in the ads listed that you have in your backup materials, to include information on multiple events produced by multiple nonprofits. The flyer we utilize to distribute in these ads does include the Doodlebug Bazaar for the Boulder City Community Club, the Home Tour for AAUW, the Night of Lights for St. Jude's, the Parade of Lights for Lake Mead Boat Owners Association, and Luminaria for the United Methodist Church. We have developed and used this flyer for all of the holiday events for many years now. All of these events not only benefit those organizations to better help them accomplish their missions for our community, but also provide our residents with wonderful family programming and help support the business community with added customers during the holiday events. Those added customers do equate to future revenue into the RDA to, in turn, keep the cycle moving and funneling money back into the fund. The second part of this application was a new request of the chamber to submit in this manner. In doing a little research last year, in order to answer some of the then-new city manager, you don't get to use that anymore, questions regarding the expenditures for the Santa's Electric Night Parade, we have found that these expenses have been supported by the city for well over 18 years, at least 18 years that I've been with the chamber. From what we can determine, former city leadership had been involved with the preparations of the parade and actively involved in finding ways to improve safety and enjoyment. The staging, lighting, sound, and marshals' radios became expenses needed for those improvements over the years. Those needs were arranged by the city leadership and paid for by the city, although I have not been made aware of which department those funds came from. With the elimination of the PIO position several years ago, as Roseanne was the one that managed these, it was asked for, asked of the chamber to make those arrangements for the three companies that provide those services. Those professionals submitted their invoices to the city directly until last year, when the city manager and I discussed this information and he felt it best to have oversight by the community development via a grant application. As I understood the concern about the precedent set by reimbursement of these hard items and services versus just advertising based on the way that the grant program is written, I am happy to be directed to go a different route and just need the course of action from the city. We were just following through with what was asked of us and if there is a better direction with oversight from another department, we understand. The holiday events have historically been a lost leader for the chamber and our board of directors have always voted to continue to support this annual cash outlay from the chamber as their contribution to the community. These events are all free and open to the public. Some years are financially stronger than others when businesses can afford sponsorships, but during this time of year, there is a lot of competition for the same dollars by all the same local nonprofits. So we simply couldn't bear those costs at this time. And therefore, we are grateful to the city for the annual partnership and contribution to the community in helping us make the holidays special for our families and residents, as well as those guests coming to Boulder City to enjoy a little time in our magical city. Thank you. I hope that answers some of your questions. Any other questions or should I?
I had just a, something I had noticed. The expenses you submitted from last year, it looks like your expenses for things like, it looks like coloring books, advertising, Christmas. Did you sponsor all of Christmas?
We did. Yeah, we sponsored Santa and all of Christmas. It's amazing what we do over there.
You know, it's a nice holiday. It looks like you were roughly $1,200 in the hole there on that.
Yes, and in fact, the board, in previous years, the number that they capped that, the loss for that community event was $3,000. So that was always an amount that we kind of teetered on. And so this year, it just depends on what is needed for advertising. So we know that this year, in fact, in the budget, we want to do the mobile billboard as well, trying to set up partnerships with some new opportunities. And they recently just joined the chamber, so we'll be utilizing their services and doing a 50/50 match with them as well. And so our advertising expenses will be a little higher this year.
And where does that mobile advertising occur?
They have chosen several locations in the Las Vegas area for a period of four days. That's what we can afford is four days. And so they choose areas like ballparks and the mall and just different places where moms might be, where families might be, that would be interested in our type of activities.
Okay. You know, this is part of a discussion that's been going on for some time. You know, we always, I believe we always have to keep in mind that this is tax money. It's not free money, magic money, any of that. It's tax money. If we spend it in one place, we can't spend it somewhere else. This event has been occurring here in Boulder City for a long time. It looks like if we go back 10 years, the city itself was handling this event and then for some reason that was transferred out.
It looks like to me, and we can actually probably reference Roseanne, she has more information than I do, it looks like to me that some of those expenses that were deemed necessary, added improvements for safety with the marshals having radios, those kinds of things, must have been conversations that happened at a city leadership level that I'm not aware of. And so then, of course, paid for also by the city. And then as Al and I had multiple conversations, trying to understand it a little bit better and trying to figure out the best approach, we believed that this, that through the community development department, it might be the best way to go because of the oversight there. However, I do understand Councilman Fold's concerns because the language for the special event grant does not include hard services and hard items such as this. So I'm just looking for direction.
Well, and as we all are. A question that occurred to me after my briefing yesterday that Mr. Mays answered for me, another event that, you know, at least I remember, I think I remember, that the city took care of most everything was the Fourth of July. And that's another event that the city still is heavily involved in, but maybe it's not the city's event any longer. And Mr. Mays informed me that the city contributes $15,000 towards the fireworks fund for that. And I believe there's a separate nonprofit, it's not the chamber, but there's a separate nonprofit.
Yeah, it's a formal 501(c)(3).
Okay. The Danbury Committee, and they provided somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, of $30,000 towards the fireworks. So through their fundraising efforts, they're doing that. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, what events do the taxpayers in Boulder City want to support and which ones are more the responsibility of business or individual nonprofits? So I guess that's the question that we have to address here, is what is it that the city does want to invest tax dollars in? I do appreciate the fact that you are now getting some statistical information on what happens when these events occur as far as the benefit that it's bringing to the businesses. You know, this budget has been creeping up. I think initially out of the RDA, it was somewhere around $10,000, then $15,000, $25,000. Now it's up to $33,000. Those are all tax dollars, as I mentioned before, that the taxpayers are giving to efforts to benefit businesses. Now, we can get into a long discussion, you know, does that improve the town? What does it do for the town? But I do think we need to have that discussion about these, especially on events, not this event, because it looks like your figures show that you're doing this at a loss for the chamber, but loss where other nonprofits are actually making money at their event and yet coming to the taxpayers and saying, "We want just a little bit more money from you" for some reason.
So I can answer that. The Danbury Committee, since I'm a member of that committee, we do make the majority of that money from beer sales, from alcohol sales, and also from parking.
You mean on the Fourth of July, the beer sales go well?
And I also, you know, with these, with the Christmas events all being open to the public and free, it's a little hard to create a revenue stream in that direction. And that's why I talked about the sponsorships. In some years, it's great, but we are all competing for the same dollars at the same time at that particular point. So kind of to give you a little bit of background on why that's a large revenue driver.
Okay. And again, I do appreciate the efforts of Mr. Mays in bringing a process to this so that we do have an understanding of what the events are about, what the taxpayers are contributing to it, and what the nonprofits... contributing to it, and what the nonprofits are getting out of the event. I think that's important for the taxpayers to understand which events are profitable, which are not, where would they rather see their money go to support the events, but getting that statistical information, I think, is also going to be critical. So I would encourage you to continue to look for ways. I know the city is also doing that, because that is actually one of the requirements in the application process, is to show that these investments are actually bringing about increases in sales during or from year to year.
I agree. I thankfully had an opportunity to help write that application process, so I'm familiar with it, and I think it is important, and hence why we will continue to collect that data for, at least the information on occupancy, and continue to work with the city and the Economic Development, EDAC, and make sure that their findings are also, so that we can continue to add to this information and have kind of that support. I have been attending the Economic Development Conference for the state, and today, they were sharing some of the numbers and the revenue on some of the different events that were going on, especially in the sports market. It's just unbelievable. But it also, they talked a little bit about the ripple effect and how that does increase opportunities for the rural communities in all of Southern Nevada. And so in those conversations and dialogue, they were quoting a lot of data that I learned today, on ways that we can find some of that information for ourselves and that they're willing to provide to us. So it's, again, it's just partnerships, it's collaboration, and trying to find the right source to get that information.
Thank you. Any other questions from Council? Mr. Adams?
All right. For fear of being called the Grinch here, if we were to just approve of the advertising dollars and not at this time cover those costs, would Christmas be canceled for you guys? Are you, would that still be, are you guys still able to move forward with your event at this, at this time as is?
My board, I would have to go back to my board and ask those questions, because of course, they'd have to approve that. And I do have several board members in the room tonight. I will share with you that I would never pull any of the activities that are going on, I would never cancel them. We would just simply have to go out to our businesses and ask for more. Sometimes that's a little frustrating. They're a little bit frustrated that they are looking for support as well. And so this is a great opportunity for us to, again, show the citizens and the business owners that there is a partnership with the city. This is just one of those opportunities and revenue, or opportunities to try to help that partnership and that collaboration. I would never cancel them. That's not something I would do. I don't kind of believe in cutting off your nose to spite your face. You just work harder, find it someplace else. I can't promise that it would be to the same level, but it is currently.
And so I guess that, I don't personally see there being any question that this absolutely benefits the community. Had you asked me maybe three or four years ago, "Hey, who does the Christmas parade?" I probably would have told you that the city does. I, for the longest time, had no realization that this was a Chamber event. So I think that, to me, it's pretty obvious that this does benefit the city, and I have never heard from anybody who has any complaints that, "Hey, maybe, are we spending money on this Christmas parade?" Nobody, you know, there's no Bahambogs or Scrooges out there, is what I'm trying to say. I am curious, where were the costs from this coming from originally?
That's a good question. Actually, there was not a specific line item in the budget in previous. It just came out of a general line item in the city manager's budget. And so when we went to revamp the support of nonprofits, that's why this budget got moved in this current fiscal year. And just to make sure that it's clear, it did move to the community development under line item 1073. I'm looking at my community development director, make sure I get my numbers correct. And with that, there are other nonprofit line items that are in there that are also funded. There's a, you know, support for the hotel and a number of other nonprofits that reside within that particular area. I do want to also make sure that it's clear to the council that the monies that were currently in the budget for this current fiscal year to support this particular item is in the budget, you know, pending approval by the council to actually expend. And those dollars are general fund dollars, they are not RDA dollars.
So are there other sources for this funding than from, directly from this grant at this time?
May just clarification, other sources of funding? We have is 10730, which is a community grant fund that supports several nonprofit entities. As City Manager mentioned, the hotel, funds that go to Lend a Hand, and emergency aid, these are all paid out of this fund. So several nonprofits. So that would be the source for these funds.
Is there a way for them to apply for that money through 10730, other than as part of the special event promotion grant?
There currently isn't another grant program that would outline that, just like with the other nonprofits that receive funds, there's no grant process they go through. It's just itemized in the budget as part of the council consideration each fiscal year as to the funds that are budgeted for those different nonprofits.
Don't they have an application process?
Application process?
Like emergency aid or lend a hand?
They do through the community development block grant funds.
Okay, so that's...
But that is funded through here.
Yeah, those are different dollars, so...
Those are different dollars, but there's not...
Yeah, so, Councilmember, what you're suggesting is that those nonprofits that currently are being funded out of 1073, they are being funded because council took action through the budgetary process and identified certain dollars to be annually expensed for those nonprofits. So that's what those items are in there. We moved and budgeted up to $5,000 for this particular event in that item, but we did not have a mechanism outside of the budgetary process. But, you know, by the time we got the paperwork in, then we realized we have, partly it's the advertising dollars and partly just logistical dollars to be able to support, you know, like the microphone stages and that sort of thing. So if the council chooses to move forward in support of this, what staff will do is make sure that there is a specific line item under 1073 in the community development, and so you will see that in the next budgetary process as a line item, and then it will just be an ongoing annual expense of, you know, $5,000.
Mr. Adams?
So I would like to see, potentially in the future, the next time we come around, somewhere else that this money's coming from, or at least maybe it's restated, what the purpose for the grant is, exactly what we're willing to spend the money on, what we're not, so that we don't end up in here. But I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable with saying no, because I think this is a very important tradition here in Boulder City. I know it's well received by the community and beyond, so, but I would, moving forward, I would like to see us maybe kind of address some of that, so we can clarify that, and instead of mowing over all of the things right now, I would like to motion to approve, to reimburse all of the requests.
Prior to motion being made, any other comments, Councilman Harhay?
No, I have no problem with the way it is as now.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Adams, you had a motion you wanted to make?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to approve of, to reimburse all the dollars.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. I think we may need a little precision on what we're motioning for.
You're motioning to approve the grant for $5,000?
Up to $5,000?
Right. The resolution that you had before you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It's four to one.
Thank you. And additionally, I do support St. Jude for Sandra Frazier.
Any advertising needed for that, or just word them out? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number five, Resolution 6979, approving an agreement for the purchase of water systems equipment. I believe that is Mr. Porter.
So item number five is essentially a, it's a new contract. Historically, we've done blanket purchase orders with these types of supply houses, because annually, we run into things either we know or we don't know about when we're replacing valves, pipes, meters, all those materials you'll see listed in the agenda item. We don't necessarily maintain that inventory, because in some cases, we don't know how many we're going to need, or even what exactly we're going to find out in the field. So it's more efficient for us to maintain those blanket purchase orders with the supply houses, because they inventory and warehouse that equipment for us and provide it to us on an as-needed basis. In this case, it usually typically is about $95,000 a year, that varies. We don't bid this type of workout, again, because we don't know. We supply on an annual basis, or we utilize a small amount of a significant number of items, but not a large enough amount of items to put together, necessarily put together a cost-efficient bid package. As an example, we recently replaced some aerators, or we are in the middle of replacing aerators at the wastewater treatment plant. Those are of a different value. We wouldn't take advantage of this contract to buy those, because they're, it's closer to a $50,000 purchase. We would go out for quotes or formally bid those. We wouldn't use this type of contract. Also, it doesn't, this contract doesn't preclude us from getting quotes or doing anything with anybody else to purchase equipment. Historically, we've just went out and got the blanket purchase order with the supply houses. It's somewhat of a housekeeping item, because we didn't enter into contracts with them, so we're now moving forward and meeting city purchasing requirements. We're putting together a contract with this company. So I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Yeah, the only reason I really wanted to bring this is because I had questions from a number of residents, even after the briefings that we had, it was just, and it was mostly regarding the language in there, that the contract is exempt from competitive bidding under NRS 332115. And just to read it for everybody, "Contracts which by their nature are not adapted to award by competitive bidding, including contracts for, and in this matter, equipment which, by reason of the training of the personnel or an inventory or replacement parts maintained by the local government, is compatible with existing equipment." So just a brief question, how was this company selected?
So to provide a little additional information for that, we have different, we have fire hydrants, we have valves, we have a myriad of equipment out there. We try to be really consistent with utilizing the same types, so that we know what we're working on, on a regular basis. Now, we have different materials and older materials in the system, but as we might move forward and replace those, we want them to be very similar in nature, the same type. We know what we're working on. It makes us more efficient when we're working in the field. And so, in the future, replacing like for like, instead of having to find something unknown in the field, having to work around it, having to replace it with something different, and it takes, you know, if, in the event that water's out, guess what? Water's going to be out longer, but moving forward, we'll be able to fix those items faster.
And, and just to clarify, how did we come to the agreement with this company?
There are a number of supply houses, and in this case, this company uses a majority of the materials that we utilize. So it was, basically, it's a convenience for us, because they carry a majority of the types of material and equipment that we require.
And the $95,000, or up to almost $100,000, that's just regularly what we're about spending?
It's a regular, about, and it can vary. It can be less than that. It sometimes, as, I'll give you an example that hasn't happened yet, but I know it will. We'll find something on Boulder City Parkway. I can almost guarantee it, and that could actually take up a little bit of that, you know, contract.
And then just to clarify for everybody, with regards to the, being exempt from, you know, competitive bidding, that would be for going into the purchase, not for this contract? We wouldn't, that wouldn't be normal to be entering into any kind of, going out and looking for different deals or something for an entire contract, this, we're talking about for specific items of purchase?
Correct. So this is more like, it's a supply house. So in the event we were going to initiate a meter replacement program, or a valve replacement program, or something where we knew the quantity, and it was a significant quantity, then we would take that out to bid, and we would formally bid that.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you also. I was going to ask the same thing. To me, it's important that, when people ask me questions about, "How are you making that decision?" Or, you know, "How do we get more information about why, why these decisions are being made, as opposed to just saying yea or nay?" And I thought this was also a very important piece of information for people to know that a lot of, a lot of questions are asked and a lot of considerations are made before these kinds of decisions are approved.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to, I'd like to make an motion to approve.
Prior to your motion, I just had a couple of comments. One, I think you've already covered it, but I think we need to understand the difference between what's normally called break-fix, where these are items that you know you're probably going to need, but you can't be certain that you're going to need them. It appears that you've identified a supply source that has replacements for our ancient pieces that are likely to break.
It can be a combination of both. So we may know that we're going to replace five fire hydrants next year, but it really doesn't make sense for us to put five firehens out to bid, especially when they carry the type that we would prefer to have out in the field. But yes, oftentimes, we do find things that we didn't even know were in the field, and they typically carry those items.
And part of the reason for this, you know, instead of having to go to three different supply houses and say, "Do you have this valve that would cost $49.95 normally?" And look to see if somebody might have it for $47.85. This allows you to have a reliable source for these items?
It allows for a reliable source, and we actually get a better price, because there are a number of items in bulk annually. If we went out to bid on something like this, we would have to ask for a unit cost for each item, and then we'd be guessing on what they all are. In all likelihood, the vendor would put in, since he doesn't know how many he's going to sell, he'd probably put in a higher price than he normally would if he knew the quantity. And so it's just more, more efficient, more cost-effective for us to do it this way.
And we are also saving employee time to, we do have a purchasing officer now, you know, rather than that person seeing if they can spend three hours to save 50 cents on a price, we have this contract available.
Correct. And in moving forward, there are purchases that we make that we question, and in the future, there might be better ways to purchase those types of materials, just depending on what they are. So the goal moving into the future is kind of look at our asset management, our inventory control, how we warehouse, and the most efficient ways to do that. The purchasing manager who we work with is very good at working with us on that. That's how this item actually came up, we just needed to get a formal contract in place.
Okay. And last comment I have, I did notice it's a California firm. You know, we want to get the best deal, but if there are vendors in Nevada, I hope we're looking at those first, before we go outside the state.
And there are, and moving forward in the future, there's a fairly large supplier in Henderson, we'll be taking a look at them as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just had one, sorry. One more. Can you explain?
No.
The Bennett, yes. Burn it! No, can you explain the benefit as far as uniformity of having a certain same supplier?
So as an example, and I'll use a pressure-reducing valve, because it's kind of complicated. There's a number of different types and manufacturers of pressure-reducing valves, but they are different to work on. So if they're all the same and all of, and we have, I can't remember the number, but it's like 50 pressure-reducing stations, it's just way more efficient for us to, our guys to be able to work on those, replace them, replace parts and pieces. That's, I think, a good example of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Harhay, any questions or comments?
No, I have no comment.
I'm going to wait to sit down this time. I'm going to wait to sit down this time.
I, I think you're safe, but you never know.
Just checking.
But at this time, I'll entertain a motion then.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion for approving Resolution 6979.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move then to item number eight, Resolution 6981, creating a new digital technician classification and associated salary range.
Good evening, council. This item actually requests that the city council consider making the part-time BCTV technician role into a full-time digital technician role. Although it would be changing a part-time position to a full-time position, the action by council is to create a new classification and salary range. Actually, I've been corrected, two members of council have asked that we start live streaming meetings as well as recording them so that we can post them on various websites, as well as YouTube where they can be closed captioned for our audience that is hearing impaired. This task does require additional hours for pre- and post-production. The staffing will require specific technical directing experience, and the scheduling does need some sort of flexibility because of the various hours that meetings are held. So it will require an extremely flexible schedule. And with that, I'll open it up to your questions.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
My first question is, how many hours per month is the person, is the technician currently working?
Currently?
Currently.
Eighty? No. Yeah, eight, about eighty.
Eighty, eighty hours?
Yes, she's part-time. She works about 1,039 hours a year.
And that's just with the current?
That's just with these meetings. She also does some side projects as requested for posting on YouTube.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say this, this item is near and dear to me. It is something that I did campaign on. I know there's might be some argument maybe that there's not a huge audience out there wanting to view the committee meetings, the planning, you know, commission meeting, things like that. However, this isn't necessarily about, you know, making, everybody's going to watch this. This is about, for me, creating equal access to that information. We do have a number of people here who are hard of hearing or deaf in this community. And just to note, a hearing impaired is not the proper nomenclature. It's okay. But I did, I did want to make that, make that point. This allows, by having captioning for video, does allow for better, better access to that information. Currently, we only offer audio recordings, so that precludes people who are deaf or hard of hearing from accessing that. For me, I think it's a little bit important also with this position that as of right now, I think, you know, it's going to be a big, it's going to be a big lift for this one. I think this is what requires the most support. It's not the only step the city can take towards outreach and access to information, but this is the one I think that requires the most support right now. Just a couple of questions regarding it. So in the thing, we, we mentioned four to six hours of pre- and post-production time. What's involved in that, in that work?
Typically, when we do pre-production, it means coming in, making sure microphones are working, making sure that the PowerPoints are loaded, that all of the television monitors are on. So typically, we like to have all of that checked out at least an hour in advance so that if there is a problem, we can get to addressing it right away. Post-production includes editing. We do have clips that have to be edited together. They, they seem seamless when you see them on our website, but we still do have to put them together, and we do have to encode that and then send it up to the website. So there are multiple steps, and that does often take just as long as the meeting. So when we have a three-hour meeting, it could take three hours to do the encoding processing. And then on top of that, as somebody who has witnessed digital nightmares on air personally, I, I also make sure that I, you know, I, whoever is in this position would, and if it's Holly tonight, whoever is in this position would make sure that that video is uploaded correctly, make sure that they run through it and that there's no hiccups or dead zones.
So this is a lot of information to put online. Do we have the bandwidth to support that?
We do. We do. And YouTube is pretty endless, so, but we do.
Great. And as far as record-keeping goes, what is required of the city? Like what's, what do we, what are we in compliance with once we create this content? What are we, how are we required to keep it?
The, the records retention schedule just recently changed, and now we keep videos for three years minimum.
And is there any turnaround with when they have to be made available to the public that's required by NRS?
No, not specifically, as soon as possible, but the way they're doing videos, we do two sets, you know, we, I stream and then do through a system that is running now, and then through YouTube, that would be through Holly. So I have full control over all of this stuff because I can, you know, all of the content. And once it's in YouTube, let's say it was in YouTube and we deleted our copy because we back it up with discs, we don't have control of that any longer. So we can certainly suggest to them to delete it, but you know, the, out in the world, once it's out there, it's out there. But we, at that point, we would have no control.
And I will say that there has been a lot of conversation in Carson City about social media and implications of posting, that what happens if YouTube goes down? So we can't rely just on YouTube. We have to have some sort of backups here in-house as well. Hopefully, that never happens, but we have to be ready for it.
Right, that was going to be kind of my next question as far as YouTube goes, that is, they're the own company, and while it's obviously one that is probably the most utilized video streaming platform, they, they have no, they get to decide what they want to do, what they host and what they don't. So it isn't, that's why I wanted to be sure that we are still going to be keeping these records for our own personal use. At this time, I don't have any more questions or comments right now currently.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I'd like to know where these proposed videos will be archived and how easily they will be available to the public. I believe in reading the background information, there's three means of access. One, the city website, which I believe is very limited in terms of its depth. There's also information on YouTube, on the city's YouTube channel, and I forget what the third one is. But one thing I've noticed is that there isn't a lot of knowledge among the folks who, or they can look up even the present available videos. And I think that would be helpful to, to implement just as soon as possible.
That, that's an interesting comment, Councilman Harhey. We just had somebody come to me with the website redesign and said, "I'm having trouble finding video." And so we have actually made it a little more clear on the main page where to find those videos. In addition, you know, we will make sure that we are promoting that YouTube channel once we do have that, you know, content going up there more. We, we started putting that content on there late last year, and so making sure that people know where to find it. And finally, I know that our clerk's office has a pretty quick turnaround. They actually do have a couple of residents who, who request files on DVD, if I recall correctly.
We, we do, but my, the videos that I record are up before eight o'clock the next morning because when I leave at night, I upload it, and then I attach the media the next day because when I leave, it takes quite a while to upload. So I queue it, I upload, when I come back, it's loaded, and then it's on. For YouTube, Holly gives us a disc in the afternoon. We always make copies for those residents who are still using DVRs. So we try to provide several formats where people have the ability to watch the meetings, and then we mail that to the residents that request it. So that goes out the very next day.
Councilwoman Folder, you had a question?
I did. How? Sorry, I wasn't quite ready. I lost my thought because I, you just, I just thought of another one that I wanted to ask, and now I lost it, sorry. So in this, in this current, the job description that's put on here as a potential new job, is that set or can that still be modified if we approve this position? Is that going to be the set technical wording for the, the job title?
That is, but we can always make, you know, monitor administrative changes. But when we change substantially the skills set or the minimum requirements or the title or the, I'm looking at our HR director, or the, the pay scale, then that is something that would have to come back to council for approval. Is that about right?
And I believe there is a bullet point that says, "and other tasks as assigned," so that we kind of cover that broad range of digital technician, which could change. As, as we all know, technology changes in time, so it does cover a pretty wide range of tasks.
Okay, can you, so right now, you have said that, that our current is working about 80 hours a month. Is that correct? And that's just for the two city council meetings?
Right. Approximately 80 hours a month.
Okay, so that's 40 hours for just these two meetings?
Correct. And she also, also does cover some of the occasional workshops.
Because if we, just, I'm having a hard time wrapping around the math of how this is going to work out because if every single commission met every month, which doesn't always happen, and then city council meets twice, that's about 13 meetings a month between all of our commissions, but they don't always, some are just annual. But just if, say, suppose we had all 13, if we did that for 12 months at this hourly rate, that would be over 6,000 hours a year for salary.
And keep in mind that many of the committees and commission do not meet monthly. They only meet quarterly, they meet semi-annually, and some of them only meet once a year. So what we did was we tried to take an average to, you know, make sure that we're, we have staff availability for what we believe will be the, you know, workload to be expected by, at this time, making sure that we do record, audio recordings, all of the council meetings, workshop, town hall meetings, if they're held here. If they're held elsewhere, we may not be able to do that depending on, you know, technology and what we can do. But also boards and commissions. And so that's what currently we're looking at. In the future, if we need to expand those to other meetings as well, then we'll need to look at how logistically we'll be able to handle that. But no, it's not 6,000.
Well, I mean, at the current rate, that's, I mean, if we did every single meeting, which I know we won't.
Right, no.
However, I'm just looking at this, you know, physically, a person couldn't do that.
No.
So I'm just seeing if there's other duties that are going to be cut out, or how, how would that be managed by one person alone?
I believe that Lisa did do the calculation based on the average number of meetings, and it comes out just about full-time. There might be actually, we could run with about 100 hours if I remember correctly.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll try and clarify something too that we talked about in my briefing yesterday just for the public's benefit. I believe you're familiar with the person who fills in if Holly's not available, right?
That would be me.
Okay. So if the hours start to go over, well, we have somebody that can fill in then, right?
We have a number three too.
Okay.
Mr. Armand Trout.
All right. Who's still trying to deny the knowledge based on that, but.
He's hiding back there.
And just for clarification, Councilman Adams had talked about the retention policy, and Madam City Clerk had reviewed that. Usually with these retention policies that are specified in NRS, there's not a required destruction date. There is a possible destruction date, but normally that's just saying you have to hold them for X amount of time, two years, three years. But if you were to hold the item for eight or 10 years, the NRS doesn't require that they get destroyed at a certain time.
The records retention schedule is a minimum, but what we do is we destroy what we set the policy as. It's an adopted, approved records retention schedule by the state, so if it says three years, they are destroyed in three years.
Yeah, I, I'm just getting to what gets out there onto YouTube that, as you've mentioned, we no longer control that.
That's right.
But that wouldn't cause any type of violation of the NRS?
No, it doesn't cause a violation, but it's a bad practice when you aren't consistent and structured in how you dispose of your public records. And so Tina, who has a spreadsheet for everything and a tag, and, and she's very organized, when the record is up in December, they get destroyed in January. So we've met all of the months.
Don't tell Tina about YouTube, then.
Yeah, that's gonna, that'll get her nervous.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can just clarify just one thing, keep in mind that the records retention schedule is the requirement upon the public agency as to the records that we do retain, how long we retain them. Once those records are made public, for example, YouTube, it is no longer considered the agency's records now. There is a copy that's out there, and what happens out there is, you know, is, does not fall under the NRS. So, you know, the retention schedule is about the public agency and the requirement, the minimum requirements in terms of keeping, you know, the public's information available for that specified period of time.
And similarly, a person could request a PDF form of a document, they could post it on some webpage of their choosing, and it could be left there indefinitely.
Indefinitely, correct. That's absolutely right.
Okay. Last question I have is, and actually, it's less of a question and more of a comment. Are you aware, I mean, are there other communities that regularly use YouTube?
Actually, where I came from, Kent County does. And, and we did it because we wanted to make sure that the closed captioning was available. And City of Grand Rapids, I believe, does as well locally. I believe City of Las Vegas uses it. I'm not sure about North Las Vegas, and I believe Henderson uses it too. I'd have to double-check that.
Okay. Because I'm on board with James, as, excuse me, Councilman Adams, as being one of the ones that thought this would be a grand idea to do this. And what I've seen, communities all over the country have been doing this for a number of years now. And as far as the number of people that watch these videos, I'm always surprised when I get a question at the grocery store or something saying, "Hey, that issue you talked about last week?" And I'm thinking, "I didn't see you there." People do watch these. These are a great way to inform the public.
They are, thank you.
Councilman Adams?
I was just going to say that I do know that the City of Boulder, Colorado definitely pushes it, puts it on YouTube because I have a hard time finding ours sometime if I don't go to the, the channel.
And hopefully, we'll get a link directly to that channel out there on our city website so people don't have that problem because I've run into that myself.
We'll get on that first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Well, I was just going to say, part of this is discussing whether we want to move from the part-time to full-time position, which I believe I am in favor for. This is somebody who has worked for the city for a number of years. I think it, to me, it seems to be appropriate as far as hiring a part-time employee or going to an outside, an agency or something like that. I think it's important that we keep this in-house because this, there is a lot of work and having the people who are already familiar with these processes, protocols, procedures are in place. Technology is going to change, so I think that means that this position is going to change. The classification is going to change. The compensation might have to change because of that. You know, automation is a big thing as we move forward in the future. A lot of these things are going to be able to be automated, and that's going to leave more time and more room for people to focus on other areas where we can work on this. So I think it's important to know that this isn't forever. I don't want to say that it's temporary, but, you know, we need to understand that as we move forward, we need to move towards progress and not try to, you know, just hold off or stave against it. So that's something that I think is important. But I think in moving forward, I prefer option A in switching the part-time position to a full-time position.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe that's the wording of the motion, 6981. So would you care to make a motion for that?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6981. I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6981.
Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, formerly the land management plan.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to call it the land management process.
Mr. Mays has a new title.
So earlier this year, the city council directed staff to recommend amendments to Chapter 9-2 of the city code, which regulates land management for city-owned property. And before I continue on, I wanted to just briefly describe the land management process. It is an opportunity for the city on an annual basis to evaluate the possible sale or lease of land at a very initial stage that is transparent and allows the community to have input in the consideration of that potential disposition of land. Each August, notices are published in the local newspapers asking for potential submissions to the city for consideration of the lease or sale of land. Each October, any proposals received are brought before the city council for consideration. City council at that time can decide that they want to entertain the possibility of consideration of disposition of city-owned land and forward it on to the planning commission for consideration. This occurs in November of each year. Each parcel that's sent to the planning commission, notice is sent out to all property owners within 300 feet of that property, there's a public hearing held, the planning commission evaluates that proposal, provides a recommendation, and that comes back to the city council no later than February 15th of each year. And at that time, the city council can decide to add that parcel to the land management process or not. And again, certainly at the initial consideration by the council, the council has the opportunity to just decide at that point to not move it forward for consideration. So staff has had an opportunity to review the code and is proposing for consideration this evening text amendments to 9-2 that do several things. One, it provides an automatic process for a parcel that's been added to the list to come back before the council for consideration, so it's not sitting on the list for years and years. It would require automatic reconsideration every three years. Secondly, it removes the reference to plan in the code. The public has been confused by the reference to plan, and appropriately so, because we have a master plan, we have zoning, this is not a plan, it's a process, and so this will help to clarify this for the community. And then formally, it creates the land management property list, which will be part of what is presented to the council on an annual basis. And with that, I will answer any questions about the proposed text amendment.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
I just want to say that I do believe that clarifying language to better relay the intent is an important goal to have. I think that the changes to this accomplishes that, and I think it also kind of shores up some of the blind spots that are present as far as having things that stay on for a number of years, but for what purpose, we don't know, they've been on there for a long time. So I think having that three-year review process, I think, is going to be a good thing so that we can talk about it and the community can also remain informed and knowing what's, you know, what's going on, where are the thought process, and the process is a good way to put it, so.
Oh, I just want to say, I think it's wonderful, because when I first found out about this thing called the plan, I thought it was the city's plan. And the fact that it's now going to be called something that clarifies what it is, and also I agree that properties are not just going to hang out on this list, and there will be an organized reevaluation process and removal if necessary.
Councilman Harhey, any questions or comments regarding the land management process?
No, I'm glad to see it's clarified in this particular piece of information here.
Thank you, and I know I've joked with Mr. Mays about changing the title of this, but the changes that have been made in the language are important, and it's been an issue for me for the past couple of years, and actually before that, that this process was not serving the community well, and I think by clarifying some of these things, it may serve the community better. We now have, I think it's approximately 14 parcels on there, on the list. Previously, I think that number had gotten up to somewhere around 40. So we've been able to remove a number of properties that clearly were not being developed. If there had been any interest, that interest had been lost by whoever had requested it. We're now able to focus on a list that at least has some bearing on how the city may want to manage its land, so I do appreciate that. I think that the process too was perhaps being abused in the past in that, well, I'll just put a piece of land on there, and that will then tell the city council, well, you have to ask the planning commission to look at this. We do not. If a majority of council feels that the land being proposed is either financially not feasible, does not fit in with the master plan, is a poor idea, it goes no further at that point. If it does go to the planning commission, there's not necessarily a recommendation from city council, and they can then apply their analysis of it based on zoning codes, other things that may be appropriate to their type of review. So I believe you've done us a service, a good service, by clarifying that language in this, and the periodic reviews that are going to concern, going to occur should avoid the situation where we just keep stacking up land that's never going to be disposed of. So I do appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mays?
I have, I do appreciate the changes that were made. Not only does it clarify who maintains the list, but any changes of use that will, you know, if a lease comes up and there's a change in that use, that's spoken to now, and how we deal with outside the annual review, and what happens once a property is on the list. So I do really appreciate all the clarifications, not only changing the wording of it, but really it changes the process in which we go and handle these properties. In my briefing, I, Mr. Mays, I, we did speak about one thing that I wanted to change, and so I'll share that with council since we weren't all there. But under Section 924, Part B, the previous sentence referred to both the land management process or plan and the comprehensive master plan were consistent with the property. When we stroke out the word "plan" in the next sentence, it was referring to plans, plural, meaning both the master plan and the comprehensive, oh, sorry, the master plan and the land management plan. And so the only change that I wanted to address was that we change it to address that it's also consistent with the master plan in that second sentence under B.
Okay, would you like to propose a motion then for adoption of the ordinance with that change?
Yes. So I move to approve Bill 1854 with amendments to Section 924B to include the comprehensive master plan after the word "land management process."
Aye, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mays. With that, we'll move to item 10. That's for you, Brock.
As we learned in the digital technician item, apparently I have another duty assigned. The downside to everyone's job description, we all have the very last provision that says duties as assigned, and the downside to being here 15 years is I have a lot of duties assigned. With your permission, Mayor, I would like to take Number 10 and 11 together, they both relate to GoGo Wireless and their communication facilities on top of Red Mountain. Item 10 is for Bill 1855, that's to amend Agreement Number 12-1438 to add, to exercise the first option period for a five-year extension. This bill is for an access agreement so that they have access to the top of the mountain. Over the five-year period, this will generate just shy of $2,700. And the reason this number's so low is when we go to Item 11. Item 11 is to amend the actual lease agreement for their facilities that they have on top of the mountain to communicate with, I believe it's aircraft, that provide wireless services for aircraft, and that is for Agreement Number 07-1177C, where many of that adding a five-year period to the end as permitted in the existing agreement. That one, over the five-year period, will generate for the city $152,358. So that's the one that matters. While, of course, I would argue both matter since you have to be able to get to the top. The finance department has undertaken a Herculean effort with all of our agreements as they come up for renewal, that we are changing their anniversary dates so that they don't fall in odd times of the year, but rather they follow, follow either on January 1st or July 1st. So this particular lease, well, both of them are being set to expire December 31st in 2024. That way, they wouldn't expire in October 9th of 2012 for the first agreement, or September 25th for the other agreement. Odd days when you're trying to allocate the revenues to one quarter or to another or for revenue projections when doing the budget. So that is the one minor change to the term, so they're picking up a few extra months on the back end of the agreement for that accommodation. As such, staff is recommending that both Items 10 and 11 be approved. There is a representative from GoGo Wireless here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I'll just have one comment, that I never thought I would be saying GoGo so much in the last month or so, but here we are.
Councilman Harhey, any questions or comments? Thank you. With that then, I'd move for adoption of Bill Number 1855.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I'll also make a motion for adoption of Bill Number 1856.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that then brings us to item number 12.
Can we clarify, was that last aye for or against?
It was an aye for.
Okay.
Bill 1856. Is that correct, Councilman Harhey, you voted aye on both bills?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12, Mr. Armentraut is back at the podium, thank you.
I forgot to mention my actual title, not my new job duty, I'm the city's contract real estate manager for the city, so that's why you see me up here for all these leases. Bill 1857 is to amend Agreement Number 09-1270A, which is an agreement we have with C-Spot Run. This is to exercise the option period as permitted in the agreement for an additional five-year period. This particular agreement charges no money for the use of city land over at Veterans Park, that's permitted under the city charter where the city council is authorized to enter into either reduced or no-cost leases with nonprofit entities. And so this particular one is a no-cost lease. As you heard earlier, they have made some improvements, they do pay for the water that they use out there, they have active fundraising, and the city is very supportive of their activities. And as we all know, Ms. Fraser is here to answer the questions if you should have any. Staff is recommending that we approve this and renew it for another five years.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Adams?
Just to clarify, this agreement would not limit the city from making any improvements or maintenance if they were to decide to at a later time?
That's all up to you, if you'd like to spend the money.
So things like, things like grass, when they're talking about raising $46,000 for grass and things like that, we would be able to, if we were so interested in being able to, to do that under this agreement?
It's a budgetary decision that.
Anyone else? Councilman Harhey, do you have any questions or comments regarding this?
No, I do not.
I just wanted to clarify something, Mr. Armentraut, on this type of lease, not necessarily in regard to this particular property, but these types of leases where it's city land, the occupant or the user of the land is generally a nonprofit, the termination of these leases, and this lease in particular, what would be the process? Because this is a five-year renewal, and I believe that the wording of it is every five years it will come up for potential renewal.
This particular lease under Section 23 does have a provision for convenience where we can terminate with 60 days' notice. Either party could terminate with 60 days' notice. Other nonprofit leases have a 90-day clause, some 120-day clause, this particular one is a 60, or 90-day clause. Did I say 60?
You did.
I'm getting old. It's 90 days, so just asking, I'm getting real old. So for any reason, for convenience, because we want to take it over, what have you, it would be a 90-day notice and we can terminate for convenience.
Okay, thank you. And since it's already been mentioned that sainthood awaits Sandra for all of the great work that she does out there, I don't see that that's going to occur with this lease. Any other questions or comments? Again, we'll look for a motion then for approval of Bill Number 1857.
I move to approve Bill Number 1857.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Harhey, did you wish to enter a vote?
I vote aye.
All right, so we have a unanimous aye. And again, we really, aye, and I believe the community has made clear how much we appreciate the efforts of that. I hear from people all the time that use the park regularly and thoroughly enjoy it, probably don't appreciate the work that goes into it, but a lot of folks also support it financially. So again, Ms. Fraser, thank you very much for what you do down there, and your organization. Okay, that will then bring us to item number 13, the RC Race Track. Again, this is a lease amendment in this case, I believe?
That's correct, Mayor. Again, Brock Armentraut for the record, you're contracts real estate manager. So that everyone's on the same page. Yesterday, the RC Quarter-Scale Association of America had a lease that was in good standing with the city. Tomorrow, they still will have that same lease in good standing, and it won't be terminated regardless what happens tonight. The purpose for tonight is whether or not to add additional uses that they're permitted to have on the property, regardless of who they sublet to or that they do themselves. Currently, they're limited to only radio-controlled vehicles, typically quarter-scale, carred by hobby shops and the like. They have made some improvements to the site and others as well. They have two tracks, one a novel, and then another that looks like a miniature motocross track with dips and dives. track with dips and dives. Roughly a year and a half, two years ago, they were subletting the property out to others to have other types of racing activities, commonly called midget cars. Those are vehicles that are operated by people, typically children, in very small race cars that go around the oval track. That was in violation of their lease. And once the city realized what was going on, they were put on notice that they were in breach of their contract, that they had to cease that activity immediately, and so they ceased. And then a request is made, could they have their contract amended to allow such an activity occur on the property? They're told that multiple things had to happen. In addition to a lease amendment approved by the city council, it would also have to receive an amendment to their conditional use permit and to allow something other than radio-controlled cars on the site. The city isn't inexperienced with having land leases for risky situations. Previously, the voters had approved for use out in the Eldorado Valley, a motocross track for motorcycles and ATVs and so on. And we required them to have very hefty insurance because it's inherently dangerous activity. And as we sadly know, people got hurt out there, one even lost their life. And being the landowner, in addition to suing the lessee and the operators of the races and what have you, they also sued the city. Because we have a very aggressive risk policy, we required the lessee to indemnify the city and list us as additional insurer so that their insurance companies had to indemnify us and pay out any claims so that the city would not be on the hook for paying out any damages. No different for this. If we're going to have a risky activity, the city needs to be protected, and that's why we have the provisions in there for the $5 million coverage. As you can imagine, if a young person were to get hurt significantly, their medical bills will be expensive for the duration of their life, and the purpose of that insurance is to cover those losses. We would hate to see someone injured and then not be covered because there was a lack of necessary insurance to cover their potential injuries. So as we reviewed the request to add what's commonly called midget car racing to the lease, we looked at our past experience, what we've required of other leaseholders who had risky activities, and crafted an amendment that had the additional insurance requirement for when those activities occurred. Had a provision that when they have humans on the track, that they have an EMS provider onsite with an ambulance, so that should something happen, they can receive immediate care and not have to wait the three to seven minutes for a fire truck to get there with an ambulance crew. We also had some other minor clarifications in the amendment to clarify things that as a city we've learned with experience what really should be in a lease. For example, who pays property taxes? As the Boulder City Rafton Pistol Club learned when they amended their lease several years ago, when it got recorded with the county, the county instantly hit them with a huge tax bill. And they looked at the city to pay it. The city doesn't pay property tax. The lessee pays the property tax unless they can prove to the county that they're a nonprofit, which they eventually worked that out with the county. Similar provisions are in this lease amendment that should the county decide that they need proof they're nonprofit, they may be assessed taxes, and until such time, they're on the hook to pay those taxes until they can convince the county that they're nonprofit and should not have to pay taxes. We did investigate their nonprofit status. According to the Secretary of State's webpage, they are a nonprofit entity and their status is active. Their state license number is C6165-1979, if anyone would like to look. It's easier just to go to the Secretary of State website and search r/c/quarter. It's the only listing that comes up, and you can see that they have what their status is. As a reminder, our lease isn't with an individual, it's with the organization, the nonprofit organization. There were some concerns that the current president happens to be a resident of Henderson. Our lease isn't with Mr. Leidecker. He happens to be the president of the organization. Our lease is with the nonprofit organization. As we know from C-Spot Run, as an example, from time to time, the presidents change. And that's been our experience with Boulder City Rafton Pistol Club and other nonprofits that we have relationships with. And I wouldn't expect any different from this one, that over time, the president may be someone entirely different. Because we are adding the provision that they could sublet the property out in a quasi-commercial fashion, the city, with our commercial leases, we get paid. So if they were to sublet the property out for other entities to use the facility, the lease does require that we receive 50% of whatever fee they charge the entity to use their facility. From staff perspective, that's non-negotiable. It's 50%. Just, that and the insurance requirements and the EMS requirements, that's, if we were to have a for-profit entity out there, we would actually be collecting 100%, not just 50%. So we're trying to recognize the nonprofit does have operational cost and perhaps they use some of this revenue to help offset their costs. But at the same time, it's a quasi-commercial activity when they sublet the property out to others, and the city needs to be paid. So we're, as we're always looking out in the best interest of the city with all of our agreements. I believe there are individuals here who are supportive of one action or the other. Again, to reiterate, if this is denied, it doesn't cancel the lease. They have the same 90-day termination for convenience clause as all of our, as many of our other leases. But as of tomorrow, regardless of what happens today, they could still hold their radio-controlled races, at least for the next 90 days, unless we were to exercise a termination clause. If we were to terminate and want to lease it out to someone else, we would still have that requirement for the $5 million insurance and EMS provider and other similar things if it were to be for human-occupied racing on the track and so on. So for anyone to think that that would be different, it wouldn't be different. The city has to look out for itself. The taxpayers expect us to make sure that we don't put them on the hook in the event of something horrible happening. That said, can I ask, are any questions you may have?
Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Councilman Haray?
Yes. Back when this track was originally proposed and constructed, was there any intention or foresight that at some time in the future, human-driven vehicles would be using that track?
Well, I have to look to Mr. Hall, and Mr. Hall, who's been here longer than I have, he knows Methuselah and Moses. He was shaking his head, no. That was not contemplated. At that time, it was just radio-controlled cars.
Okay, I have another couple of questions. One, in the documents, it uses the word "human-driven," but in reality, these are all children. Is that true?
I believe it's all categories of humans. I mean, we had children speak tonight, as an example, but if you were to go to the USAC Racing website, you'll see races of these small cars by adults as well.
And what percentage of the participants of these children are residents of Boulder City?
I would have no idea. The proposed amendment doesn't limit their subletting to only Boulder City organizations, so we don't have that data.
Okay. So we don't know how this directly benefits any of the citizens of Boulder City from a participation standpoint?
Other than the several who spoke earlier in public comment who say they use the track, we don't know.
Yeah, but that doesn't give us a number in terms of the whole total scope of the population that's on that track. I'd like to find out that information, no matter how this goes.
Any other questions, Councilman Haray?
That's the end of my questions.
Any other members?
I have some questions.
Councilwoman Folda?
Do you know how much, if they should have to pay property tax, what that would be for that? I think it's about four acres.
With the county, it's a crapshoot.
Okay.
It's how much they decide the property's worth based on the activity. I know one of our solar properties, they had assessed it initially when it was just dirt at a value that was consistent with the casino being on the property and already built, even though casinos weren't allowed in Boulder City, and we made that argument to the county, and they still assessed it at that high rate. It literally depends on who comes out and evaluates the property.
But as a nonprofit, they could be waived of property tax?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so, when does the current RC lease expire, do you know, the one that they currently have?
It's automatically renewed every October.
So it's just an annual, a year to year? Okay. So if this was amended, would that change that date?
It doesn't change that provision.
That will still stay, because it'll come up again in October?
Unless we take any proactive action, it's automatically removed.
Okay.
Or renewed, excuse me.
Okay.
I also have a question. The midget car group, is that itself a nonprofit?
You would have to ask them. I don't know.
Okay. And also, would, trying to figure out how to ask this, the money that the, I'm assuming the midget car group would be the ones who would have to pay for the insurance and the EMS? And how would that work, what they pay, would they have to work it out with the leaseholder in terms of who would pay for that and what effect it would have on the money that they paid to them that would be split with us?
That would be their business relationship. Ultimately, the ones we're going to hold responsible to have the EMS on the track, have the insurance, is the current leaseholder. And whatever arrangements he makes with any sublessee, that's a business range between the two of them. But ultimately, if we find out that they plan to hold a race and they don't have insurance, we're not going to let the race happen.
Hey, any other questions? Councilman Adams?
So just to clarify, if this does not go through, then there is no human-occupied racing, vehicles occupied by humans racing, correct?
It won't be possible, this track, that's correct.
Right. So if people are interested in having that activity there, it does require this agreement to go through?
For this location?
Yes.
Okay. And as a reminder, under the charter, for any land matter, it requires four votes in the affirmative. So for some reason, should the vote be three to two, it automatically fails regardless, just so we're all on the same page. So people don't get false hope that it's three to two, it passed, and it didn't. It has to be at least four votes.
And then, during the planning commission, where I think the use of the land was talked about, there was one gentleman who was concerned about its proximity to the veteran cemetery, and he was concerned about noise issues. Have there ever been any complaints of noise from anybody visiting the veteran cemetery outside of that that you have been made aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. If they've had complaints, Michael, I don't think you've heard, you haven't heard any, Chief, you. It's possible they may complain to the veteran's cemetery caretakers, but we haven't received any, or we're not aware of any.
Okay. So just to clarify, you know, this lease, it was originally from 2000 to 2005 in October, automatic renewal. They, so it's automatically renewing. At any time, we could choose to terminate. If for some reason we wanted to see somebody else in there, we would have to go through that process.
Right.
But even then, whoever came in there, we would still need this agreement, especially when it comes to the liability and so forth, to have this go forward.
If it's to have humans, yes.
Correct. That's, no further comments.
Hey, I have a couple of questions on this. Councilman Adams just mentioned that this lease was original in the year 2000?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have nearly 20 years out there. A lot of the land out in that area started to be used around that same time. You know, Veterans Park was developed a little bit later than that, but that land started getting developed out there. And much of it's the city's largess. And we do have that in our charter to be able to do that for nonprofits. What I see with this, though, is we seem to have gotten off track with this piece of property. And I'm not sure of all the details. Councilman Haray had mentioned earlier that some additional information may be needed to evaluate this lease properly, rather than just having these yearly automatic renewals occur with no review of what the property is being used for. I also do understand that these groups have invested some money out there. They've built an asphalt track, there's a concession stand out there, there are some safety barriers, things like that. The problem that I see, though, is this is not owned by a nonprofit. It's owned by the city of Boulder City, who, as the term I used earlier, largess, allowed a nonprofit at no cost to come in and use, I believe it's four acres of land. And that, over this almost 20-year period of time, appears to evolved into something else, where that nonprofit is charging other groups to come in and use it for purposes that were never approved. Somebody looks at the lease and says, oops, we've made a mistake here. But I'm still concerned about one nonprofit, whether they're working with other nonprofits or anyone else, acting as though they have ownership of the land and they're free to do what they would like out there. Now, again, I don't know all of the things that may have occurred between these groups, but that certainly is one of the appearances that comes up. Is there anyone here who is representing the current leaseholder? Would you like to come up? The question I have is, what is your understanding of the rights and responsibilities you have there at the property?
Well, we built the facility for one thing, you know, we've been there since 2002. You know, we built all the driver's stand, concession stand, paved the track, parking lot, fencing, brought in water, sewer, power. So we invested a lot of money in there, and, you know, we pay property tax. We are not exempt from property tax. We pay water, we pay power, we pay sewer, and, you know, we got upkeep on the track and the facility, and...
And how do you finance those expenses?
How do I finance them? Out of my pocket.
You don't, you don't charge, you don't, excuse me, sir, you don't charge any membership fees or any fees for the use of the track?
We charge, we charge our radio-controlled car or club $500 rent for each race, which, you know, then goes to, you know, paid property taxes and upkeep and power bills, so.
Okay, so the financing then is being done based on fees that are being charged to not any members of the group that you have, is that right? This is some other group?
It's our group.
It is our group.
It's our group. Quarter-scale, quarter-scale radio-controlled cars.
Okay, so you maintain a membership for that group?
Yes.
And these people are all members of it? You have a board of directors for your nonprofit?
Right. And they, and we, when they race out there, they pay the same thing, $500 to race on that track.
Okay.
Sir, also, excuse me, just to maybe clarify it a little bit, it's, the racing is a circuit, and we travel, there's races in Arizona, there's races in California, and when, actually, the track in California is a specific midget track. So we rent that track from midget racers, and they charge us $500 to race at their track for the weekend. And that allows us to use their facilities for one-day race, and we have a partial day of practice. So that's where the fees all came from. And just penciling it out, it doesn't even break even by the end of the year with the property tax, the utilities, the upkeep, the weed pulling.
Insurance.
Insurance. It's, it's, it's an expensive hobby.
Okay, and we'd heard earlier that nonprofits would be exempt from property Okay, and we'd heard earlier that nonprofits would be exempt from property tax?
Well, unfortunately, we're not.
Only the property, not the buildings.
Not the buildings.
That's how they attached it.
The property is, we're, we're paying property tax on the building. We built those buildings. When we got the land from you, it was, it was bare. And we built every one of those buildings out there, so that's why we're paying property tax on those buildings. The, the land is exempt, right, but we're paying it on the buildings.
Okay. Was there ever an understanding that you had, or your organization, to your knowledge, as far as what type of arrangement there was regarding the ownership of any structures that you built out there, between you and the city?
I, well, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in it at, at that particular year when they started that, that stuff. I came in, and, you know, I've been in there 17 years, so I, I did, wasn't there when they first started this whole process of getting the leasing, or getting the land from the city and, and doing all the permitting and stuff like that. I wasn't involved in it then.
Okay, were the buildings already existing when you became involved?
When I came involved, yes.
So the buildings were already there on the property?
Right.
Okay.
The track wasn't, I built the track and the parking lot and paint the track, they, they didn't have that finished yet.
Okay. Any questions from other members of council? All right, Councilman Adams?
What are your thoughts on the agreement? Do you, do you have, are you comfortable with them being, representing the?
I think, I think it's a great idea to have them out there, but there is, you know, there is difference between last year and this year. There's, you know, different recommendations from the city than there was last year, and there's a lot, you know, we got to make sure everybody fault, you know, is, you know, following the, you know, rules and regulations and set forth by Boulder City and us. And I mean, you can't just go out there and expect to run a race on a track that somebody invested $100,000 into. That track wouldn't even be there if we didn't build it. So, there's upkeep, those quarter scale, or, excuse me, those midget race cars are going to do 100 times more damage to the asphalt track than those radio control cars will ever do. So, you're going to have to repay sooner or later. Where's money going to come from? Who's going to pay for it?
Well, that's the whole reason for, they're, they're calling it a rent, but it's, it's really, really just, everything invests right back into the property, into the upkeep. We, we have to make sure that we keep a good face on, you know, the residents drive by, people drive by, we try to keep all the weeds pulled, the fences in repair, everything's locked up, so that, you know, we don't get people just wandering in. But we do want it to look nice. We, we painted everything, and it's not cheap to keep up a four-acre facility, especially when, you know, it's just one little club trying to raise the money to do all of it.
But I, I, we both agree that we would love to see the midgets come in there, but they're going to have to sit down to the table and work things out. And if they, if they can work it out, fine. If they can't work it out, I can't, I can't help that. I mean, I, my hands are tied, just like everybody else is.
We all do.
But I would love to give them the opportunity. I am not kicking anybody out. You know, we, when this thing came up, it was just the biggest slap in the face to me as was for somebody else, and, you know, but we would love to have them out there. But, you know, we all got rules, we got found, we all got to pay. And that's just the way it is. And if they can agree to that, we would love to have them.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Harha?
Yes, my impression is there's a lot of fuzziness regarding this proposed plan, and it appears to me that the city kind of loses control after it has the lease with the applicant that is applying for this, when the other groups involve themselves. And you mentioned that these other groups, the racing groups, had organ, formal organization with the, as you pointed out, Mr. Harha, the board of directors and so forth. And as such, they must have financial statements. And I think the city would certainly like to see some kind of statements regarding the revenue income, if it's a 50% partner. I think there's a lot of overhead here, the potential overhead, that from a legal standpoint, and also from a upside versus downside, I think the downside for the city is much, much greater than any potential benefit it's going to receive from a lease or from these 50% admission fees. So I, I, I would basically caution the, the council in terms of the unanswered questions, and I think the unsettled nature of the, of the chain of, of control that would take place, because certainly if there was a catastrophic accident, there would be a number of attorneys who would like to delve into that, that issue. So I think, I don't think this is prepared well enough for me to feel comfortable with voting for it.
Anything further, Mr. Harha?
No, that's fine, that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have, I do. I'm curious, the, the midget car group, they don't charge for admission? Do they charge for?
For admissions, I mean, like, for spectators?
Right.
No.
Okay, so they get their money because there's an entrance fee for the participants?
Right, correct. You know, if you're, if you're racing out there, you have to pay, you know, so much per car to race, and then they pay to, you know, the money goes to $500 to rent the track, and then their club just, you know, puts, takes care of the rest to pay the bills or whatever they have.
Okay, so they pay you $500 per race?
Yes, correct.
And how many races did they have?
Well, we have usually anywhere from, sometimes, it depends on the year, sometimes the other, the other tracks get, like the banquet stuff, so they get more races, usually five to six races, and then sometimes they, if you can put a special race on, if, if the year's going good, they'll go up to seven.
Okay, that's just the midget car group?
Right.
How many, how many events are, is the RC group hosting per year at this track?
Five or six.
Five or six? I think, at some point, you know, we're, we're discussing a lot about, you know, uses, how we got into this, what it all means, but in the end, we're talking about an agreement that would allow for these types of vehicles on this track. And if we're comfortable with that, I think we have to move forward with this agreement as is, because it covers a lot of, a lot of things that the city needs to see happen. If, if we're not comfortable with that, that's, that's another thing, but I think that that's kind of what we're really discussing right now, is do we want to see this type of activity on this land? And if so, is this, is this how we want to, how we want to see it?
Well, I, I disagree a little bit with that, that I, I think there's a larger question here. It's not whether we want to see this type of activity or not. It's amending this lease to accommodate that activity, where does it take us from what was originally intended by the city here? That's my concern, is that we're making an amendment to a 20-year lease that apparently, over that 20-year period of time, was never really looked at. The activities that were occurring out there were never really looked at, and we're being put in a position of saying, well, you know, over a year ago, we decided to add a new activity. We didn't ask anybody, we just decided, you know, it's kind of like our place, and we decide what we want to do, regardless of what the lease said, regardless of the fact that it's city-owned land, and now we're coming to try and correct something that we did in the past. I, I'm not really comfortable with that. And I think Councilman Harha has also brought up that what has come up here is, again, not a preference of what type of uses we want to see out there, but that we need to look into all of this and get a better understanding of what is happening out there before we start approving new uses. I, I really think that that's the main issue here, not what we want to see out there, but what is going on out there? What would the city be getting itself into if an amendment like this were to be made? And what has the city already gotten into with the situation that currently exists out there? So I, I would be willing to make a motion that we table this, we give direction to city staff to obtain further information from both nonprofits that have been using this, if they wish to pursue it, and that we get a better understanding of exactly what's happening out there. Any question, or any input from city staff on doing something like that?
One of the issues that you have, Mayor, is that you have a current lease, right? And, and that's going to continue. And so that's the party with whom we have a responsibility and obligation to. And so entertaining, you know, any other uses outside of that lease, we, we don't want to violate the current lease that we have. And, and so that's why we have this before us today with the RC group, because they are the current leaseholder for this property, for better or worse. And so that's who we're dealing with, is the city. And so while there are rights and obligations and opportunities within that lease, as Mr. Armond Trout has, has already set forth, this is the party that we're dealing with today. And so I would just make that cautionary statement, that that's the party whom we are dealing with.
Well, go ahead, finish, please.
And that, that's what I would caution the council, that, again, that is the party that we have the relationship with, and that is the party that we're dealing with.
Well, and I do understand that, and I, I agree with you. I, I think that what we have here, though, is another group that has come into this and say, well, we want to be part of this. You know, if they choose not to do that, if they choose not to proceed, that, that's up to them. I'm saying that in order for me to give further consideration to this request, I would need to see additional information from that group, as far as what type of activity we're asking city property to be used for. City property that, by the way, there's no charge for. We're not charging anybody anything for this property. So if other groups are coming to the city and saying, well, we want to be able to be part of this, if they choose not to provide information, well, that's up to them, and quite honestly, my response would be, if you don't want to talk to us, we don't need to talk to you.
So, Mayor, to answer your question, yes, the staff could go back and get additional information from the other group, and they would present that for you. I do just want to mention that in section 21 of the, of the proposed agreement, it says the city has approval authority for all assignment and subletting in section 21, and the city also has approval authority for all races, regardless of who is racing in section nine. No limitation for nonprofit and, or for-profit and nonprofit entities as well. So although that is covered in terms of, you know, the overall city authority, you know, beyond just the lease of the land, so we do have some say-so as to activities, but in this particular lease, this is very specific about the midget car activity, and so we can ask for additional information from the other group, so that the council is more comfortable in going forward, because you do have the authority under the proposed lease agreement to ask those questions. So as the, as the individual that we currently have the contract with, yes, he can go out and enter into those agreements, and those are agreements between him and the other party, but ultimately, the council can oversee and weigh in on those as well, under this particular section.
Well, with that, then, I'll, I'll ask for a second on that motion, then, that we table any consideration of this amendment for this evening, and we give direction to, sir, I'm making a motion right now, you'll have an opportunity to speak once that's been done. Thank you. Getting back to that motion, then, tonight, we table any action on this particular proposal. We ask that both groups provide information, including financial statements, the type of use, the frequency of use, so that we can make a proper evaluation of this. And with that, I would ask for a second on that motion. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Is there a timeframe for when, for tabling this, when we'd want to see this back?
We can give a timeframe, but ultimately, we'll, we'll be up to the parties to provide that in a timely fashion. Once we receive it and we feel that it's adequate enough to present to the council, we will bring it back to the council.
Well, just to add a little bit, then, I believe I'm able to make an amendment to the motion. This motion is, or this lease is up for automatic renewal in October. I would encourage the parties to provide that information prior to that, and that this will not be an automatic lease renewal this year, that that will come to council for discussion on renewal of the lease. Again, I would ask for a second for that amendment, then?
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay. Sir, you had some comments you wish to make?
Yes, sir.
Please identify yourself, come to the microphone.
How you doing, folks? My name's Tim Reichert with Las Vegas Karting Championships. We would be the, the company that would be subleasing the property. And to give you a little background on, on our group, we've been at Las Vegas Motor Speedway for five years. We've always had a $5 million insurance policy, we've always had an ambulance. To give you a little bit of level of comfort, we've never had a, we've never had an accident that we actually had a, a person taken away in an ambulance. We've never had a claim insurance-wise, or we've never had a, any type of security issue. But we'd love to give you all the information you'd like. We can have that for you within the week. But we are, we've been in business for five years, actually operational, for five years, and have been in great standing with Las Vegas Motor Speedway. The only reason why we're looking for a new piece of property is that the Speedway actually annexed that to the, the company that's doing the automated cars, the, I don't exactly know the term for them, but it's, which has displaced, you know, probably 45 little guys that are, they're racing. My son's actually racing in the IndyCar program, so I'm, I'm not doing this for him, I'm doing it for the kids. We've actually got some, Boulder City kids that have been racing with us. But I would love to be able to provide you any information you'd like, and I'll, I'll get together with, with Bob, and we'll get that to you. If you give us a list of what you'd like, I'll make sure we have it for you, like I said, within the week.
And is your, is your organization a nonprofit?
Currently, it's, it's, it is a profit organization, it's an LLC. And that's the way the Las Vegas Motor Speedway wanted it set up. You know, we can change that, if you'd like, but that's, that's just the way the Las Vegas Motor Speedway wanted us to, to proceed. But, you know, we've, like I said, we've always been in great standing with the Speedway, and to be honest, we're the hardest guys on the planet to work with as far, and I appreciate that, because, you know, they're, they're all about liability. You know, obviously, racing is a, can be a dangerous sport, but we've, we've minimized that. And to kind of address your, your point of if the track was made for what we're looking for, while it wasn't, I wouldn't, my son, like I said, races in the Indy Racing League, but he's coming to, back to want to race also. We have a few adults, but the majority of them are kids, and I wouldn't put my son out there if it wasn't safe. And so we've looked at it, made sure that it's, it's, it's going to be a great place to race, and we look forward to, like I said, providing some information, and hopefully moving forward to put a great program together for you for, for Boulder City. But I just want to say thank you, and like I said, if you, whatever information you need, please let me know.
Thank you. Any other questions? For the gentleman?
So, I just want, so you do already have insurance that would cover $5 million?
Absolutely.
And you usually have an EMS already currently going to you?
Right, yes, we use, we use community ambulance service, we've used them for five years. As far as our insurance goes, not only, our insurance covers not only Las Vegas Motor Speedway, but everybody involved, so it's, it blankets it. Drivers actually sign a waiver, so it, for Mr. Morris, it's, they say you cannot pierce it. It's the same, it's the same form that my son races, when he's racing a 180-mile race car. So everyone is covering themselves as far as the waivers they sign. They know that they're signing, racing at their, at their own expense, but we do have a $5 million, but, insurance- But we do have a $5 million insurance policy. Like I said, we've never used it. We, safety's the main thing. You know, I'm a dad and I've got a, I love all these little guys that I kind of oversee and I'd never want to see them get hurt. And so basically, what we're trying to do is just provide a place for kids to be able to race. And that's kind of the bottom line, when you boil it down to. We've got a lot of quarter midgets, kids that have been displaced and we've got kids out the Speedway that's been displaced and we're just trying to find a home for them. You know, we're just trying to find a place for them to race. And on that note, if you need any, I can leave you my contact information if you'd like. But like I said, please let us know what you need and I'll be more than happy to get it to you within the week. Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We do currently have a motion and a second then, to table this currently. Any discussion on that motion?
To clarify, the amendment that you made that was seconded, do we have to vote to approve that amendment?
I believe when we vote, yes.
That's amended.
So this is, the motion on the floor is to amend the motion?
No.
No, okay. I'm just double checking, so it is to...
The motion on the floor was amended, so the amended motion is on the floor.
So the change is included in the motion?
It got a little interrupted there, so I'm making sure I'm...
Any other discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous then on that. And with that, we'll move to item number 15.
Well, before we move to 15, I want to make sure I captured everything you'd like us to capture.
It's on videotape, Brock, don't you know? It's on YouTube now.
Yeah, that apparently I'm 13 in charge for. You'd like more information from both parties or all parties that use the facility, and financial statements, demographics of who use the property, frequency and types of races and activities, and a better description overall of what they do, as well as I had other notes that possible amendment, possibly be considered as health, will have annual reviews of the lease to verify that they're conforming to the terms of the lease. And can we tell a nonprofit who they can sublet the facility to? Like what nonprofits can they lease to a profit and so on? Does that capture it?
Well, I wouldn't restrict it to nonprofit. I would say any entity that they are looking to sublease to.
Okay. Did I capture everything then? Want to make sure.
I believe you have it.
All right. Thank you. Under threat of death, Lou, you should see the text I got. I'll be brief for this next item. This is item number 14, consideration of bill 1859. This is to sell approximately 8,300 square feet to the adjacent property owner at 115 Castle Montana Court. The property owner had constructed some improvements on city land. I'm not sure if Holly has that to put on the screen or not. There we go. So you can see in the picture, there's a nice round rock contemplation thing, kind of like a maze, and then a little accessory structure that crossed the property line. Roughly a year, year and a half ago, he came to the building department to get a permit for a fence and the city discovered, "Oh, looky, you're on our property." So we started at that point having discussions on having him purchase the property so that his improvements were on his taxable parcel. City council has authorized an appraisal process. We had it appraised. The higher the two appraisals came in, at 7,200, for 7,700 square feet, so extrapolated out for the 8,300 square feet, the higher the two cost would be $7,764. Our code does require any land purchased that they also pay the cost of the appraisals. Appraisals are expensive, as well as we also require them to pay any recording costs, any survey costs and real estate transfer tax cost. So altogether, they're looking at approximately $15,600 in closing cost to purchase the property from the city, should the city council decide to move forward and approve this resolution, excuse me, this bill. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council members?
I do have one. If this were not to, if this land was voted not to be sold, who was responsible for the appraisal?
The city ate the cost. As we collect it when we execute the, in either lease or sale, so if we end up not executing the, in this case, the sale, we just ate the cost of the two appraisals.
Which was about $7,000.
$7,000 and change, yes.
Councilman Adams?
Yes, since this, we have changed our internal policies that if the council does authorize an appraisal, we're requiring a $5,000 deposit. So in the event that they don't like the value, we're not on the hook for the cost of the appraisals. Because you're likely to have a request to purchase some additional property in another location in town and we want to make sure that we're not on the hook for that. So since I've been working through all these processes, that's one of our new internal policies. But this particular one, if we don't go forward, we just ate $7,000 and change.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Adams?
How would have the process have differed had Mr. Jamison gone through the proper procedure of acquiring this land? Would have it been any different as far as costs and all that sort of stuff go, or is this...
It would have been the same. The only thing, it may have been different, is back in 2014, maybe land values might have been a little less. So the appraised value might have been slightly less. But the requirement to pay the cost of the two appraisals, the survey work, the recording costs and so on, he still would have had to pay all those costs.
And part of what is on the land is a shed that is partially in the, in that area. And with what we considered, when the land we were looking to sell would follow in ordinance with all of our other ordinances as far as setbacks and stuff like that?
That's how we got up to the 8,300 square feet. Plus, you may have noticed on the city prepared exhibit that looks somewhat like this. In addition to the land where he's encroaching, because we like nice straight property lines, not odd shapes, we're requiring him to purchase another roughly 3,500 square feet on the backside to square off the property. So should the city decide to develop the property in 30, 40, 100 years, that that city and that city council will have a regular property to develop. So he's being forced to purchase additional property that he hasn't encroached on currently.
Which kind of led to my next question is, other than just the money, the monetary value here, do you see a benefit to the city in selling this land?
Very minor property tax increase. I mean, very minor.
But having the clean lines, you see as a benefit?
And I think you meant to ask me, is there any penalty for constructing the shed? Our building code requires if you do any construction without a permit, the fee is automatically double the permit fee. So when he does obtain his building permit for the shed and any other improvements that may have required a building permit, the community development department can assess a double permit fee.
All right, and then just, this kind of does seem to be a recurring issue where we have property owners who have kind of gone over the line, literally. Why do you, why does this seem to be a recurring issue with the city? I understand some of the logistics, but if you could kind of explain that a little bit?
In a traditional subdivision, you typically have a neighbor behind you and the property corners are marked either a three-bar or what have you, or the fence has already been built by the developer, so there's no misunderstanding where the property lands are. For those properties that border up against the desert, especially the older properties, the property corner may have been established at one point in time, but over the many, many years, the property corners are misplaced or they're removed or they get buried. And so the new property owner comes along, buys a house and decides, "I want to build a fence" or "I want to plant some trees," and he thinks he knows where the property land is. He takes his best guess. Most of the time, they guess right. As we discovered with this property, the one next door didn't. He's over the property line by roughly five feet. And I don't think he intentionally went over the property line. He probably thought it was on the property line, but it's based on the county records, it's over the property line. Unfortunately, that's not uncommon for properties that border the desert. They're usually very close to a hundred foot or two, but there are some where mistakes are made. We know that surveys vary in cost, but this particular one cost the city $1,000. I've seen them cost as much as $5,000 to survey some property and some as little as 500. It all depends on the surveyor and the available markers for them to get their range and bearings from. You can see why some people, when they're putting a fence up in their backyard, they take their best guess instead of spending an extra thousand or $5,000 to verify they're within an inch of their property line.
And just to make sure everybody in the audience was paying attention, why is this not as part of the land management process right now?
The land management process has an exception for minor lot line adjustments for residential properties of less than an acre.
Thank you.
In fact, I think I even used the exact words.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment. And it was just based on my first response to this item. And that is, my first thought was, gee, it's nice to ask for forgiveness rather than ask for permission. And really, that did have an effect on me that, from the very beginning, that, you know, when you've got this large of a piece of property, you accidentally build on what's equivalent to what my house, my entire house is set on a piece of property that size. And I thought, how do you not know that you're accidentally building on land that it doesn't belong to you? And I understand, since it does back up to the desert and there may be a sense that, gee, I think I should have that evened out piece.
Well, the evened out piece is a requirement of the city, the back triangle. He didn't ask for it and he'd rather not have to purchase it. That was for the convenience of the city. But you're right. And we all have a responsibility to know where our own property lines are. And unfortunately, it is sometimes easier to ask forgiveness than permission.
And the good news is, I guess, the original property sold for about $23,000.
Back in the day?
Yeah, the whole property.
Councilman unfolded?
When this was looked at, was there a survey done of the entire property? So that there's, are there any other? I know we're aware of this because it's up to RE easement, because we have a road easement next door. But I'm just looking at one of your slides and are you aware of any survey lot lines being done on across the other side of his property as well?
Any other encouragement he may have on the north or the east property lines would be upon other property owners and that would be a beef he would have between neighbors. The only survey we did was for what we were willing to sell to him. So we did not survey the north or east property line.
Councilman Adams?
And just to clarify, there was, the city had no other preconceived ideas of what they could potentially use this land for? There's no...
Houses.
Correct, okay.
Councilman Harhead, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. I think I had brought this up during the staff meeting, that they, what happened here, their partial complicity is also with the city in the first stages of it, I believe. And that the discovery was taken when Mr. Jamison went to apply for a new permit for this fence. And he's done everything to mitigate that. And from looking at the history of the thing, it didn't appear, and I must share my same initial reaction to that of Councilman Bridges. The one thing that I had spoken about in the past is the fact that it's much easier for folks to ask for forgiveness rather than permission. But I don't think that applies in this case. I think this is a valid mistake. And looking at the, honestly, oddball nature of the property line on the documents that are in the packet, it would be difficult for anybody to not assume that where he built that rock feature and where the shed was, was not on his land. I could easily see that. And I would also question people that would want to say, "Well, why didn't he do it?" Well, why didn't he examine it on his own? I'm sure that most people don't even have a copy or have never seen a copy of a plot map for their property. Perhaps in the closing documents, but they really don't study it. So I can see where this is an honest mistake, an honest attempt to correct the mistake and an honest attempt to compensate the city for fair use of that property which doesn't serve any other purpose now or in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one comment. The structures that are there, do they require building permits?
The shed does. The rock garden does not.
Okay. And I do agree that, you know, the appearance is a very irregular shape to that back lot line. But the question of getting building permits is, should be fairly standard knowledge. You know, I can certainly understand these homeowners, when they gazed out their back window and looked and thought, you know, "It would be really nice if we built something out there," where they could mistake that they didn't realize they had this jog that came into their property there. I do think, though, that as a city, we need to come up with a policy that is going to say, "Well, we're just going to handle these on a case-by-case basis." You know, whoever happens to be sitting on council at that time can make decisions. Or we're going to establish a policy and say, you know, "If you ignore the law and that turns out to not be in your best interest at some point in the future, that's not going to be an issue for the city council to continually resolve." There is a responsibility on homeowners, if they want to do building, they may want to consult with the city and say, "Do I need a building permit for this?" I don't know that that would have been caught in the process of obtaining a building permit, if it would have been looked at by the planning department and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, but that's city land there." But in this case, it doesn't appear there was an attempt to apply for a permit for additional structures on the property. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct. And while it seems logical that everyone would think you need a building permit, typically, they think that applies to houses and garages. I've worked in several cities and it's very common theme that people wonder, "I needed a permit for my 10x10 shed." They don't, that's something that they don't understand.
Well, I understand that, but I guess that it's establishing a policy that, you know, I could say, "Look, I didn't know I had to get my registration on my car renewed each year. I did it the year I bought it and I thought I was good to go." You know, there are things like that that get to be the responsibility of the public. So again, the discussion is probably going to need to be had at some point. Do we just say, "We'll handle these on a case-by-case basis?" Or do we say, "We're going to establish a policy"? And I do believe there is a penalty if a person does build, runs into a situation, it comes to the attention of the city, they are required then to get a permit and that the structure abides by all of our codes.
Correct.
There is a penalty then that does apply, is that correct?
Typically, it's a double the permit fee. And depending on what they're constructing, sometimes they also have to remove some of the sheetrock or other improvements so that the city can verify that they are complying with the building code.
Okay, and there may be instances where whatever was constructed does not meet code, is that correct?
That's happened from time to time and they were required to demolish it.
Okay. Well, we don't have that policy now, do we?
Other than we do things case-by-case as it is, but as far as everything you described, well, we already have the policy for the building permit requirements. People are supposed to come in first and ask. They don't all ask because many don't think they need one. Other than maybe a better education campaign to let people understand that they need to get permits first, that might help. The building department historically has had an amnesty month so that they would at least come in and get a permit, pay the regular fee and not pay a penalty, just so that they could make things legal. But from time to time, building department does discover things that were built without permits and they do assess that penalty and go vigorously after the violator to make sure that... and they do assess that penalty and go vigorously after the violator to make sure they built it right.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just want to add just to that note of, I think it is a lot about education and that, you know, even just putting it in our utility flyer, these are the types of structures that would require a permit and getting that out to the public. I think we could work with our press to educate that. Because I know even with fences and things like that, that my neighbors have had issues. So, I mean, just being aware of property lines and building structures. I don't think I've ever seen anything come out from the city regarding that. So, I mean, maybe if we could start some campaigning and have an amnesty where people would want to come forward and get the correct permitting.
It's been some time since they've had that article. It has been run in the past several different times. Unfortunately, then we've got to convince people to read the utility mailer.
Put money in it.
If they answer the question right, we'll give them a discount on their power bill or something. Councilman Adams?
I would just like to echo that I would in the future like to discuss a little bit more policy and how we kind of approach this because, you know, personally on this issue, it's, you know, up against the desert, the lot lines are a little odd. I don't see that we're taking away a great deal of use from the public with this land. It certainly doesn't affect any historical attributes to the community or anything like that. But I'm just kind of making a judgment call going, oh, this one, this seems okay to me. But then the one that comes up down the line, I think, and this one doesn't seem okay to me. And I know that's obviously what I ran to do, to make those calls. But I would like that we have a little bit more of a policy so that, you know, there's a little bit more structure to how those decisions are made so that it's not just, you know, at the whim of, you know, I like this person and I like what they do and I think this rock formation is nice, so this is okay with me. But I think that other one is ugly, so I don't like that. So I would like to see that. Like I said, personally, I don't see this as being too intrusive on what we had. Obviously, it was, but I don't feel that this land being sold to this person would take anything away from the community.
And with that, I will entertain a motion for approval of Bill 1859. And a second?
I'll second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous on approval of Bill 1859.
I can count to four, so thank you very much.
Okay, and now we will move to Item 15, Appointment to the HPC, Historic Preservation Committee. Very well then. I'll nominate Blair Davenport for reappointment to the Historic Preservation Committee.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Blair Davenport to the HPC?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And I will say that I've known Ms. Davenport for, I don't know, three years now. She is an outstanding asset to this community with the knowledge and research that she brings to that position. She's done an outstanding job on the preservation committee. We will now move to Item 16, Appointment to Committee to Reduce Homelessness.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director for the great city of Boulder City. Item 16 on the agenda is the matters pertaining to Assembly Bill Number 73, an act relating to homeless persons in Clark County and the appointment to a Bill Implementation Working Group. The city council is required to appoint a member of the city staff to this group and an optional community member to represent the city on AB 73 Implementation Working Group. And June 5th of 2019, Governor Sisalak signed the law into, signed the bill into law. And the bill requires each local government to appoint members to a working group to prepare, submit, and report recommendations to address homelessness issues. And appointed members should include one member of city staff and you could also appoint an optional community member who works on issues of homelessness. October 1st, 2019 would be the temporary working group. You need to appoint a person by that time. And there's no financial impact for this group. And the Recreation Department staff respectfully request that the city council appoint Parks and Recreation Manager Julie Callaway as a city staff representative to this working group. And for the past five years, Julie has continued to represent Boulder City on the Southern Nevada Continuum of Care Board Committee on Homelessness and even chaired the committee in 2015. She has participated in the annual census point of time contact with the homeless in our community and is very knowledgeable on the community effort to end homelessness. And you may also appoint a community member who is also knowledgeable on homelessness to serve on the group without compensation. So that is your choice. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Mr. Hall?
I had one question that came up from the public. And that was, Manager Callaway's been doing this for about five years. And who or what is reported back from all these meetings that she's attended and been part of?
Julie, why don't you come up?
Well, just recently, one of the things that the city manager has put me in charge of is to start a homelessness task force, is what we're calling it at this point. And it's starting at the city department head level. And we will be putting some recommendations that will be coming to you as far as how we want to, as a city, approach the situation in our community. Because in years past, we haven't had as much of an influx as we've seen in the last probably 12 months. So that is on the immediate forefront. Chief Shea and I met today with Emergency Aid to see if we might be able to come up with a partnership with them, find out what services they're providing and what services they have had requested of them. So as of right now, that is the major thing that is coming forward. A big part of the COC board is for funding through HUD Funding that supports homeless services. And some of those funds do trickle down into St. Jude. So that is one of the nice things about that is that the money that we use helps one of our local providers.
Just one other. So in the last five years or so that you've been associated with this part, has there been any services in the city that you know of that we've used or implemented? I'm not sure.
So we don't actually have any service providers directly for homeless services right now, specifically in Boulder City. Emergency Aid is the closest thing to it, where they do vouchers, they do assist. Local residents is their primary focus. But they do help others that are in need with night stay in hotels and stuff like that. And that's not, their programs are not funded through the COC. And so one of the, another thing that will be coming forward in the next couple of weeks is we do have a joint use agreement with the jurisdictions in the Las Vegas Valley. And we help fund the census count and the homeless shelters for inclement weather and the HMIS services.
But to clarify, Emergency Aid only provides for current residents, correct? They have to show some sort of residency before they're assisted?
Primarily, yes. I mean, that is, they would like to be able to help everybody, but yes, their focus is on helping our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I would like to remind council that right now, we're talking about the appointment to this committee.
That's correct. So before the council tonight is really a legislative mandate that all public agencies must appoint a staff member. And the purpose of this particular committee, this regional committee in Clark County, because it's just Southern Nevada, is to come up with proposed plans on how to address homeless issue on a regional level. And also, they must identify potential funding sources that perhaps may be able to be used to help fund whatever those recommendations may come out of this particular committee. So it's really a regional effort. This report is required back to the legislature, I want to say in about a year's time. I think it's October, the following October is when it's due back to the legislature. And this committee must go to each of the agencies, each of the cities, municipalities, and report to each of the boards what the recommendations are before that report is finalized and sent to the legislature.
Thank you. With that in mind then, I think we would be best to handle this in two parts. We have a recommendation to name Ms. Callaway as the Boulder City Representative. So I will entertain a motion to do so.
I make a motion to appoint her, Julie Callaway, to the committee, reappoint.
It's an initial appointment.
It's an initial appointment, okay. Appointment to the Clark County Bill Implementation Working Group.
Okay, are there any other names that anyone wants to consider?
I would also consider Beth.
Well, right now, we're looking for just the city employee. Okay, then we'll close nominations and look for a second on the motion for Ms. Callaway.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. The second part of this then is that it's been made available to also have a member of the community. I had spoken to Ms. Kazmersky, who is the comptroller for Catholic Charities of Southern Nevada. She has extensive experience working in this area with trying to reduce homelessness. And she had offered to serve on this committee. And so I would nominate her as the citizen. She is a resident of Boulder City. Nominate her as the citizen representative for Boulder City.
And I'll second that.
Okay, are there any other names for consideration? Okay, we'll close nominations then. All in favor of naming Ms. Kazmersky as the citizen representative?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous then. And that brings us to the city manager's report.
Mayor and council, the claims paid report and financial report, all transactions that appear in this month's reports are routine in nature. No other items to report.
Thank you. That will then bring us to our final public comment period. During this period of time, the public may comment on any issue they desire. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Hands. Mrs. DeShane?
So Judy DeShane, so nothing is going to be done about homeless people in our community until after all this study is done, if I understand what you were saying. And I mean, I hate to see things pushed a year down the line when, if there is something we should be doing now, we should get on it before a problem develops that's worse than what some people are complaining about now. Thank you.
I would just like to make a correction on that. This committee was mandated by the state legislature and we're fulfilling the mandate from the legislature here tonight with the appointments we made. Internally, as a city, we are also having city staff develop a policy for the city. That's occurring now and we won't be putting that off. It's clearly an issue. We don't appear to have a thorough policy. So we will be looking to do that in the near future. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and that will bring us to council reports. Councilman Haray, do you have any reports that you would like to make?
No reports for this one.
Okay, Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that everybody is aware that the Southern Nevada Harm Reduction Alliance is participating in its third annual International Overdose Awareness Day. It's going to be at the Chuck Minkler Sports Complex on Thursday, this Thursday, August 29th. And they're going to be having overdose prevention training at both 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. They're going to be providing a free overdose prevention kit containing nasal noxalun, which is the opioid overdose reversal medication. Opioid addiction is a real thing. I personally have had to deal with those that I love in my life that have dealt with this. I'm sure many of the members out here in our community also have dealt with this. So if you or a loved one deals with this, I strongly encourage you to go there. There's no shame in addiction. It's absolutely, it's just something that we all have to deal with. So I strongly encourage anybody, even if they have interest in this, to going out there and participating in this. Also, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I believe it's next Tuesday, September 3rd, we're going to be having a special meeting. We all voted real recently on allowing council to refinance that. We're going to be discussing that so you guys can see some action real soon. So I'm encouraging everybody to come out and see some change happen.
Okay, Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I went to a meeting this evening of the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Commission, Coalition, I'm sorry, which I was appointed to, which looks like it's going to be one of the shortest appointments in history. It was decided this evening to disband the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. Apparently, this has been a discussion that's been going on for a while and they seem to keep having ties. So last one was four to four. Today, we had three rounds of votes. Five to five, five to five, and finally, a quite demoralizing six to four with the final decision. After having listened to a consultant that was brought in and offering different opportunities, the major problem was it seems they've been going on for a while with very little direction. And so according to a couple of the commissioners who were chatting, there may be some opportunity to put together some non-coalition or commission type of energy into some of the bigger problems that all the communities are dealing with. But it's not going to look like what it looks like now. More to be revealed.
Thank you. Councilwoman Folden?
Yes, I spent this last week meeting with all the department heads of Boulder City. And I just, I really want to thank them for their time and for all the knowledge that they have and that they've shared with me and so, we're in good hands.
Thank you. And I would just like to comment on a conference that Councilwoman Bridges and I attended last week, the Clean Energy Summit. It was hosted by the Regional Transportation Commission. Governor Sisalak and Senator Cortez Masto were there. That's an indication of the level of importance of this. They talked about production of solar power. They talked about Nevada being an exporter overall of power and never mentioned Boulder City. I guess they just forget about us from time to time. But anyway, I know that many of the people that were there are well aware of what we do out here in Boulder City. The goal is to reduce carbon emissions as much as possible. We've been doing that since our inception here in Boulder City. So hopefully, we'll be working with some folks and they can become better informed of the projects out here. Lastly, school's back in session. I asked Chief Shea yesterday, you know, we don't have the times anymore on the signs. And the chief said that it's 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after school that the school limits apply, just as they always have. So that time is... So that time is 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM? Or is it 7:30? Ah, I put you on the spot, huh?
I'm not out there that early. The state, excuse me, the state law is half hour before school to a half hour after when children are present commuting. So if it's 10 o'clock in the morning and there's no kids commuting, it is not a school zone. It's always been that way. And it's no difference. It says that the signs now conform to all the signs in the region. And, but it's, that's basically, if the lights are flashing, same thing. It's when children are present commuting.
And I believe one example you used was, if you see a crossing guard, you better slow down.
That's usually what I do because I've drive through several school zones every day. And if there's crossing guards are out there, the school zone's usually in, that's when it's functioning. When they leave, the kids aren't commuting anymore.
Okay. All right, with that then, we will conclude the meeting. Thank you all for coming and we are adjourned.